Good evening. Today is Tuesday, February 22, 2022. We'd like to welcome you to our school board meeting. Board members present in the boardroom are members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Hallman, Donley, and Bellamy. Member Higgins will be joining us on, is online? Not yet, but he will be joining us online. So with that, I'd like for Ms. Shaw, our student representative, to lead us in the pledge and the land acknowledgement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of this indigenous people. Tonnan.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Again, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and of this board. The board thanks its students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district. Those investments of your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. That brings us to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any opposition to approving the agenda as presented?
Could I speak to the motion?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Madam President. I know this has always been our tradition, and I'm not going to object to it tonight, but I'm thinking that in the future, it would be the better policy if we put contracts on the non-action item list first, and then two weeks later, or whenever the next meeting was. Sometimes it's only a week these days, that it was on the action policy, because I think the significance of the ratification vote is really important, and I just think it would give the public more opportunity to be advised and think about it. But I'm not objecting to.
Okay. Thank you, Member Donley. I'm just trying to understand what your comment is. Could you just?
Well, traditionally, whenever there's a ratification vote, and it's ratified, it goes right to the action calendar.
Yes.
And I'm saying that I would like to see that. I'm not asking tonight, because it has been our traditional policy, but I'm making a suggestion that we really reconsider that for the future, and that there be additional public notice for these contracts before we actually have the actual vote. That's all. I don't have an objection.
All right. Thank you, Member Donley. Your point is well taken. With that, is there any opposite? We have before you, you have before you a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the agenda stands as presented. And that brings us to item B, our Student Advisory Board Report.
Okay, so Student Advisory Board, or SAB, met on February 15, 2022, at 11:15 a.m. here in this boardroom. We started the meeting by playing on-the-back Pictionary, and then we heard from the delegates who traveled down to Juneau for the Association of Alaska School Boards Conference, and here's what they shared with SAB about the trip. The attendees were Maggie, Lydia, and Josh from Polaris, and then myself from South. So we traveled to Juneau to be in our state capital, which was a first-time visit for three out of our four student delegates. We had the privilege of meeting with legislators like Senator Tom Begich, Representative Garantar, and Representative Harriet Drummond. We got to see firsthand the diverse student representation from around the state. We got to meet with Commissioner of Education and Early Development, Michael Johnson, where we were able to extend, to have extended opportunities to meaningfully and delightfully engage and connect with our school board members, Pat Higgins, Kelly Lessons, Dora Wilson. We got the opportunity to understand the Anchorage School Board and the AASB legislative priorities. We were able to attend legislative meetings with board members in the Capitol. We had the opportunity to be introduced on the House floor, and we got to have dinner with Representative Calvin Shrogie. So that was a recap of the Juneau AASB trip. And then after those reports, we heard about the Alaska Center of Education Fund School Board Candidate Forum, the ASOG, or Alaska Association of Student Government, report from Region Four Representative Maggie from Polaris. We then heard each, from each middle school and high school, about any dances or assemblies they have planned for the rest of the school year. Following reports, I gave the school board report, and then we heard from our school board member Carl Jacobs. After that, we did elections for the president-elect position, or the person who will be SAB president for the 2022 to 2023 school year, where I was re-elected. And I'm very grateful to be able to serve my position for another term. After that, we had small group discussions, timed out the meeting, and our next meeting will be on Tuesday, March 22, 2022, from 8:15 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Are there any questions for Ms. Shaw? Great report. Thank you. So there were how many of you? Four? Okay. Great. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Moving back to our agenda, that we, that brings us to item C, which are go, which is our goal monitoring. So we are now at the point on our agenda where we are going to have our goal monitoring conversation for February. First, I'd like to confirm, the report was given to us by the superintendent and to the public at our first meeting, and that will be the case each time. We will give a report, the superintendent will give a report at that time, and on the second meeting of the month, we will have our conversation. So first, I'd like to confirm that all four components of the monitoring report are present. And what I mean by that is that the report clearly shows what is being monitored, and this year, this year, this, this, at this time, it is our math goal, and that would be goal number two, and guard, and goal number 2.1. The report also shows the three previous reporting periods, the current period, and the target reporting periods. In addition, the superintendent's report shows the evaluation of performance via MAP growth, and that is, that is shown on page three as above target. And, and finally, the report shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables and data that's presented in the report. And it also indicates our next steps. So with all of the components being present, we're ready to begin our monitoring conversation. So for the first part of our conversation, we will dig into the data itself so that we, we can, and the latter part of the, looking at the who, the what, and the why, the latter part of our conversation will focus on the how category of questions. And so as we've done in the past, we will follow this logic model so that board members can ask their questions, and we will do it, we'll do a round-robin kind of process. So who has questions for the superintendent at this time? Member Lessons?
Sure. I wanted to start off on page five, please, with respect to sixth graders, who demonstrated the only fall-winter gains in the percent of students at or above the benchmark across grades three through nine. So I'm wondering, what's your sense of what worked well for them? Or what differentiates these sixth graders from their peers?
Thank you. That's a great question. At this time, when we look at data and what works and what doesn't, generally you have to look over trends, and since we only have two data points, we don't have detailed information such as like that, so I will just say excellent teaching. Way to go, sixth-grade teachers. So it could be the curriculum. It could be the efficacy of teaching. All of those things, the on-targetness of kids. That is a transition year. What we would want to look at is divide these kids up into elementary and the middle, and see where the effect was gained. But all of those things haven't been completed at this time, given that we only have two data points and the beginning of these. But we will keep that in mind and, and find out from schools what they did. Okay?
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, and maybe this is a request for Board Connect for further information. Would it be possible to split those sixth graders so we could have a better understanding of how well our elementary sixth graders are doing versus our, our middle school sixth graders?
Absolutely. That's a great question. In the Board Connect, following every monitoring, we give you all schools and their scores, and we can break those down into grade levels so that you can see the difference between those. And then we'll collectively take the aggregate of elementary schools and the aggregate of middle schools. We can do that for you this time.
Great. Other questions? So, oh, Member Donley? I'll hold on.
Thank you, Madam President. The, the period that we're examining here for the math proficiency interim goals, that's on page two, is really complicated by the fact we both were coming out on an earthquake, and we adopted a new math curriculum, and we had a pandemic. So I'm just wondering how we rationalize the, the number that we do have there, given all those variables that were injected into the?
Into the goal itself? Well, this, when the goal was made, we had peaks, although this is demonstrating the math proficiency interim goal, this is MAP growth. And peaks, we have about a 40% mean. So we were looking to go from 40% to 55%, which is 15% in five years. That would be 3% a year. But the data that you have before you is about the interim goal with MAP growth. Now, what even complicates that more, Mr. Donley, is that the PEAKS test now has changed to a MAP NWA product. So to your point of things, and the goalpost kind of moves around, is absolutely correct. And back to, tying that back to Member Lessons' question, is that we do need trend data to kind of determine where are we exactly. Again, the math proficiency interim is with MAP growth data, and the kids that are meeting the target hit the 40th percentile. So of all the students that take MAP, you know, they're, again, they're lined up on a centimeter or a meter stick, and they fall into categories. And so meeting it means you're in the 40th percentile or above. But to your point, we, we have to make sense of it with trends, and given, as we finish through this year, we'll have a better understanding. And I would assume that the math department leads. Dr. Bellamy, she might suggest a change in the interim goal after they take a look at that.
Follow-up question?
Sure.
We have a lot of resistance to the new reading curriculum. Or how, do you have a general assessment of how the instructional staff is, is dealing? Or have we even done a major distribution yet with everything else that's going on, the new math curriculum?
That's a great question. We have, and I think because it was released last year, and we had to use eye-ready assessments for math during the pandemic, that the eye-ready assessments that go along with this curriculum were pretty much accepted, because that's all we had at the time to tie people together. So I think the uncertainty of times and the availability of what you had to use really assisted with this program. And, you know, there's still PD going on, because there's still some understanding and some feedback that it's just too hard for kids. But what has demonstrated time and time again that when we present them with the expectations of higher standards, that they, they meet them. But what they do have is the individualized, computerized, eye-ready program that actually supports the teacher in the learning. So the independent work and classwork are connected. And another thing, just since you had us on this slide, the manner in which we made the goal was with the data we had in 20, and then 2021, and since the last time, we've inserted the N or the number of participants, and look at the growth and the number. It's over twice as many kids this year as last year. So that had something to do with the estimate of the first interim goal. But we're going to let this year, that, those are the data that we had to work with. And so, understanding that, we, and again, we made the goal utilizing very few students. So we didn't know who took it, who didn't. Were they more advanced, were they not? Hence, there might be a recommendation to change your interim goal. And again, those interim goals are admin's goals, and yours is the, the primary goal.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. I, I'll ask a question kind of going along with what you were just talking about. So I know we have the eye-ready in reading and math. That data, when will, this data today that we have is, is MAP data? Any estimate of when we might see eye-ready data?
Well, the, eye-ready data is not in our reports to you. Those are curriculum measures, and we have, we, most any textbook has their own curriculum assessment to test through it, so we utilize those at the classroom level, but we were not planning to bring those to the board.
We won't be seeing them.
They weren't built into, unless they're newly built into the interim goal, but they are not.
Okay. And I guess if, the other question I have, because I, it has to do with growth and versus proficiency, because tonight's report, if you could explain maybe for parents the difference, you know, between the growth of a student and the proficiency?
Sure. So we have, a couple of interim goals are built around that, and proficiency is just understanding. When we set standards and content that kids need to know at a certain grade level, we want them to be proficient in that, that content. Kids that are not proficient in that grade-level content, we still expect growth. And then kids who are behind in the content, we expect growth, and we call that one-and-a-half times or catch-up growth. But kids who are ahead as well, if I'm a third grader and I'm testing at a fifth-grade math proficiency, by the end of third grade, I should be at sixth-grade math proficiency. So depending on a year for a year in school, you need to grow no matter what. So we are not trying to close the achievement gap by having the top end get lower to close the gap. What we want is for everyone to learn, and those behind to learn catch-up growth. So if you go to, let's see, the math proficiency, here's math proficiency 2.2, and this is, so I'm just going to share 2.2 and then 2.3 interim goals. So this is looking at the percentage of three-through-ninth-grade students on track to be proficient in mathematics on the summative test. The prior summative test is what Mr. Donley was mentioning, which was PEAKS, and that's highly aligned to NAEP or the National Assessments. And we score about 40% of our kids statewide, as well as Anchorage-wide, are proficient at a grade level. What we can do with this NWA growth assessment that we're talking about is that we can predict kids pass it. And the predictability, while proficiency on MAP is in a bell curve, and the beginning of that bell curve on the percentile is the 40th percentile to the 60th percentile. If you're ever familiar, it goes like this, up and around, and the 50 is right in the middle. To be proficient on MAP is at the 40th percentile. To ensure with 99.9% certainty that a child will pass the statewide test and NAEP, essentially, because they're so aligned, a child would need to be at the 50, or the 65th percentile. So what we've done is, it's called interpolation, where you use one set of data to predict something else. And we have that on MAP, which is about 64th MAP to PEAKS, 64%, 65%, but percentile, if you're there. But we don't have it yet, because the new NWA product is, like, we're, we're starting all over again. But the, since they're the same company, they should have a very tight predictability built in. So we should know kids who score at any given time on any given assessment, if they'll be able to pass that test. In addition, I don't want people to think, oh, these are just tests for test's sake. When you're on MAP, it will go higher if you need to be higher, or it'll give you low end. So it tests kids where they're comfortable, so that whether you're skilled in math, and that's your thing, or whether you're just beginning and maybe trying to gain some skills, everybody finishes the test with about 48% to 52% correct, incorrect. So it targets your learning level. And so when it targets it, it shares with the teacher and the parents and the kid what next they need to learn to reach the next level. So you could say that everyone who takes this assessment has some sense of, like, I did my best, I got this far. There isn't the frustration of, I can't do it at all, because the test is dynamic. It moves. It's not static. So it, it's a pretty excellent tool to use. Kids like it, parents like it, because it not only looks at their individual child, it looks at their individual child in his or her grade level in our district, and the grade level across the nation. So parents have a good insight about the kind of education they're getting here, so.
Thank you.
So the next goal is the catch-up growth. And this is mentioned in your growth model. So even students who don't quite meet the 40th percentile, which is the mean, or the average, or the expected, you know, bell curve area that we want them in, we want them to grow one point times. We need them to make catch-up growth. Because if they never make catch-up growth, if I come in to school, or maybe by third grade, I'm at the first-grade level, if I don't make catch-up growth, I'm going to be two years behind my, as I matriculate the whole time. So we focus on catch-up growth, and we look at children learning a year for year. And the MAP is actually, it has some, a ROSH unit, which is kind of a, just a new algorithm that they designed for growth. And you'll see that in the lower grades, kids should grow about 12 ROSH units, while in the higher grades, they grow three or four ROSH units. So the growth is determined by this algorithm of the company. And again, when we took the CAT assessments or those things when we were kids, I remember taking those types of, it is from a normative group in one section of the country. So you'll take like 1,400 assessments, and everybody is ranked across to that norm. This product norms, puts everyone who takes the test in the normative group. So there's 30 million children at the same time taking this assessment, which gives you the accuracy of where kids stand. Now, on catch-up growth, this is what we want to see, and we did see that we lowballed this. So I am sure Dr. Bellamy and her team are going to come back and ask for a bigger ask on catch-up growth. If you look, the first column is grade level. Second one, to get catch-up growth, you need to have two testing times where the same kids took the test. So you have a first score and a second score. Of that, each grade level, the third line down shows you how many kids you have and the percentage of kids you have. Now, of the kids who did not make it, that's the first column that doesn't have like a little asterisk or percentage sign at the top. And those are the students who tested below the 40th percentile in the fall. And then we want to see, did they make it to the benchmark in the winter? And as you can see, a good portion of those kids did, and the percentage. We would like all the kids to catch up, but we're not doing too badly. We shot for about 20% of the kids, and we, we totaled together, we had 29%. So I would say that the efficacy of the PD, the new curriculum being standards-based, teaching what kids need to know, the efficacy of teachers using it, along with a practice eye-ready, where it's kind of like a game. When I was subbing out in schools, when we didn't have subs, I did a couple math classes, and I could watch this program in action, where the kids were working on different problems, because it targeted the areas that they needed. And shoot, it looked like a little video game to me. And they would answer questions, but when you read it, I mean, it was pretty detailed. It was kind of a cool little game, but it was a math game, which, for a math teacher trained, that was the perfect kind of game to play. And so if individual kids are just having that individual practice with highly motivated, game-like program, that coupled with direct instruction by the teacher, I, I see it happening. Now, we're nowhere near where we want to be, but we are moving in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, we'll circle back to Member Lessons.
Thank you for that discussion about the goals and understanding that they can be dynamic, and we can set the bar higher. I think, I think that's really important. Later tonight, we're going to be talking about the budget. And the report on page four, which is where I'm at, we're almost there there, shows that, along with our other goal monitoring reports, our E, our English language learners, our special ed students, and our economically disadvantaged students are demonstrating significantly lower rates of proficiency. It also shows a fall-to-winter increase in the number of schools below or near target, and a corresponding decrease in the number of schools on or above target. And so my question is, how do these outputs inform the FY '23 budget? What budget interventions do we think are going to have the greatest return on investment?
Sure.
To help with those problems?
Yeah. Thank you, Member Lessons. And the plan, if we can go to the, just the action plan, with the, these types of things, implementation stages, there are funding put towards those implementation stages, especially for the eye-ready classroom and implementation, taking, you know, teachers that need additional assistance. But as you know, we do have coaches in our elementary schools, and the coaches' time is now divided between math and reading. And knowing that we still need to make growth in math, and this is a goal, as well as the reading, you'll see that your budget demonstrates 12 additional positions just in reading, so that the time is not taken away from math. So we're valuing the math time, not just in the first year of implementation, but ongoing to support teachers. The, the primary resource is in the curriculum and the training for teachers, and having them feel supported as they teach these new standards, as well as new curriculum.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Bishop, I, I just wanted to, let's see what page it was. I think you just, you were just on the, the page, page eight, I'm sorry. So the, the implementation stage is, lots of work has been completed, and there's still some to be done. And I'm just, so is there anything that's missing that we, in your opinion, is there anything that we're missing? Or don't, you know, relative to, I'm, I'm really looking at the professional learning piece. Is it your sense, teachers are struggling?
I, I would say that this year and everything, I mean, keeping our doors open has been difficult, so. Right. So, so if you took a survey, and if you look at national survey, I guarantee our teachers will fall into this category as well. Elementary teachers do not generally consider themselves as math teachers. And so they feel as though that's the most difficult for them, because they weren't as comfortable maybe in school or college didn't prepare them as much. And so we want to build the, you know, competency and, so that they feel confident in teaching math. So just generally, as elementary teachers, they're not. But I, I'll take it back to the team to ask them. One of the things that we would say, and this is coming back to Mr. Donley, he's going to love that I say this, but, time. Time on task matters. And I know time in classroom learning a subject matters. And one of the most difficult things that we, most precious, is time. And so I would say time for professional development, time on task for kids to get re-taught when they need to, finding that time in the day after summer school, all of those.[1774.12] of those. So our most precious resource, you know, to serve our children, is the time needed to do it.
Thank you. Okay, other questions on our report before I go back to member lessons? All right, member lessons. Oh, I'm sorry. Member Higgins is online, just raise your hand if you need to say anything, Ms. Higgins. Welcome.
Could you just, to help me understand, what are the testing windows? When do they occur? And how, how widely spaced are the intervals? And are those intervals standard, standardized across our schools?
Um, the windows are standardized because this is a national assessment across the nation, but I'm going to ask Dr. Aikes to come forward. Do you have it off the top of your tongue, the testing windows? They're in the fall, winter and spring, over about six-week period of time. But if you test outside of that window, you can't be included in the norm. You'll be a separate norm. So Dr. Aikes, if you wouldn't mind, you probably can roll this off of your tongue. Can you share the testing windows for MAP, fall, winter and spring?
Yes, ma'am. The fall testing window should have been right at the end of September, first of October. It was delayed a little bit in the fall because of the iReady testing window. And we did the winter one right before we went to break, three weeks before we went to Christmas break. We'll do it one more time at the end of year in May for the last calibration.
And so as schools have that opportunity over three weeks, and three weeks seems like a long window, but you still are in that same normative group over that time?
Yes, ma'am. We do the two weeks for the, a hard press to get them all tested at that time. And we did get a lot of tests, the schools did a really good job, we saw the twenty thousand, so we feel very confident in the data. And it does give them a lot of good instructional.
Yeah. Generally, a student taking the test could be on it about twenty to thirty minutes answering questions. Kids that move up and are really, get some complicated, they'll, I've actually asked kids, just start hitting exit so you can get out of there, because they were like third graders way up at eighth grade work. So they, they would be longer because they have more complex questions. But the percent of right to wrong is always the same for everybody who ends. It's forty-eight to fifty-two percent right or wrong, and that's your niche learning right there.
It really is nice that we are above target in, on this particular growth. And I, just as a, you know, performance evaluation, I think, I think that's good because most, most of them have been below. But we know that we have work to do. And so if there are no other who, what, why questions, we can move on to our how questions. Are you, Dr. Bishop, do you think there is any, do we need to do any adjustment on, on, interim goal number two point one? Or will that be coming forward later if we do?
Thank you. So the adjustments on the interim goals would be presented at the end of the year. So they would, the recommendation from the math team is, it's trend data. You need more than just two, they want more than just two points in a timeline. And then, of course, those trend data will inform the new interim goals. And we've set interim goals over time, but they might just boost them up. But they would bring that back to the board for next year.
Okay, great. Hey. Final questions? You got any hows, Kelly, or any other questions that we did not get to in our discussion?
No, I already asked my, my big how, how do they, how do the outputs inform the budget?
All right. Dr. Bishop, do you have any other final comments?
Uh, no, I just want to thank the math team. They, the two leaders of that, Dr. Bellamy and Amanda Barr, as well as the, all the principals and the leaders that really shared the responsibility of teaching math. It's my favorite subject, so I love talking about it. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Not seeing any more questions, we are going to go back to our agenda. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And that brings us to a public comment section on our agenda. This is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public on items that are of concern So this is our first opportunity of the evening for public comment. The board has set aside one hour, a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Comment in excess of one hour allocation will be heard at the second opportunity for comment, which is at the end of our meeting. Several individuals have submitted comments in writing and they are attached to the agenda online. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. It is the public's time to speak and our time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments, but to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts, our, the Anchorage School Board conducts its business under Robert's Rules of Order, which is a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been used since the late eighteen hundreds. These rules require that there be civil and respectful statements and opinions expressed. Here are a few requirements under Robert's Rules. And I just want to briefly review them. Do not attack a speaker's motives or members of the board. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attacks others. We ask that you refrain from disturbing the meeting. This means no cheering, applause or outbursts. Unless you are testifying, you must be polite to the board and other speak, and other speakers. Attendees will be permitted, will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the school board. And of course, no profanity or foul language in the boardroom. Additionally, please keep your masks on at all times, including during your testimony. Your mask must cover your mouth and nose unless you have a medical waiver. No waving of signs, flyers or posters. If you have items that you wish to be distributed to the board, you can give them to Katie, seated at my left, and she will make sure that each board member will get a copy. And finally, as the president of the board, it is my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum. As such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules. Further, I will have removed from the meeting anyone who does not heed these rules and fail to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Additionally, when you came in, there was a handout at the door. Hopefully you picked it up. It's this handout that shows, that welcomes you here, of course, and reviews other audience participation points, many of which I've already covered. So with that being said, we will start our public comment section off with our students. I'd like to welcome, I think it's Adeline Brown. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome, Adeline. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Adeline Brown and I currently attend Ernest Greening Middle School as a seventh grader. Let me start off by saying a simple thank you. To Dr. Bishop, thank you for ridding us of our mandatory masks. And to the board, thank you for honoring and supporting our superintendent's decision. In August of 2021, I started school along with my peers, wearing a mask. I was so excited for the first day of being a seventh grader. So far, it has been an almost perfect year. I joined the cross-country running team and got tenth at the championships. I have gotten good grades and I made a ton of friends. So what's the problem, you ask? Masks. For the first month of school, I got headaches every day at the same time after lunch. We tried everything to figure out what was causing them. We looked at all the possibilities and made a very short list of potential causes. Masks and the blue light from my new Chromebook. Seeing as we couldn't remove my mask, we worked on the Chromebook possibility. It didn't work, so we had to face the fact that I was getting daily headaches because of the masks and we couldn't do anything about it. During the first week or so of school, every teacher works on learning their students' names, right? This year, it took two weeks or more to learn the students' names of me and my peers. Every single teacher I have said that was because of the masks. I kept being mistaken for someone else. This was because when you were wearing a mask, all you have to go off of is eyes and hair. The mouth and lower half of the face is crucial for putting names to faces. Another problem with masks is that I can't always hear what my teachers say. Let's take math, for example. This is my hardest class, seeing as I'm in pre-algebra, and I'm supposed to get a B or higher to stay in the class. If I miss one of the key points in the lesson, I might not understand the whole thing. I take Spanish as one of my electives and the stand tests are this week. There's a speaking portion. If the people grading them cannot understand us through our masks, we may not get a good score. Some teachers are more worried about whether or not we are wearing our masks properly instead of our academics. If I don't understand something, I should ask the teacher, right? But if this teacher is more worried about my mask, I don't want to go to their classroom during lunch or even ask them after class because I feel as if they're just focused on my mask. In my gym class, we are allowed to take our masks down if we're doing a high-intensity activity such as running, which we do daily. I'm very grateful for this, but I recently learned that my brother in grade school cannot. This upsets me. He is a very active kid, just like me, and they do play a variety of high-intensity sports such as kickball. He said that if his friends take their masks down while they are playing these sports, they get in trouble. My brother is not one to go looking for trouble, so he does not take his mask down. But I hear how frustrated he is each day after school. This is not right and I am very grateful this will change next week. Thank you again, Ms. Dr. Bishop, for ridding us of our masks. Thank you, ASD board members, for honoring and supporting this decision. Thank you for giving me this chance to speak here tonight and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much, Adeline. Next, we have Reed Davidson. Reed is online. Reed, star six to unmute.
I believe I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are. Welcome, you have three minutes.
All right. Thank you, President Bellamy. Hello, my name is Reed Davidson. I'm a sophomore at South and I have quite a few concerns surrounding the removal of the mask mandate. Yes, cases are trending down from their all-time high in January. However, to analyze statistics, we have to look at the whole picture, not just one part. The seven-day average case rate in Alaska is still in the top twenty percent of all days recorded here. Even ASD's own case chart marks Anchorage in the high transmission red zone. Additionally, the wave of Omicron in other places has demonstrated a plateau of cases after a downward fall. For example, in South Africa, cases plummeted and then plateaued at a case rate roughly ten times the cases post Delta. Moving to talk about quarantine. Since the superintendent's email regarding the mask mandate only proposed a change in the masking situation, I assume that all other protocols will remain the same. This brings a lot of issues. Allow me to quote an email I got surrounding a classmate with COVID. Quote, "Since all students were appropriately masked, they can, they are not considered close contacts and can continue to come to school." End quote. By reading this, I can reasonably assume that when a classmate has COVID, surrounding masks, those table mates will need to quarantine. Either that or they will come back to school after spending hours with that infected person. Both of these situations can cause students to be infected and quarantined, or just quarantined. It is detrimental to students learning to have students in and out of the building. It is certainly more detrimental than having students wear a piece of, piece of cloth on their face, much like they must wear a shirt to school. Another problem presents itself when we look at quarantine regulations. Right now, ASD has moved to a five-day quarantine. I assume this will remain the same as there's been nowhere to the contrary from ASD. Currently, the CDC says that five-day quarantiners should wear masks until day ten around other individuals. Evaluating based on current ASD requirements, these potentially infectious individuals could come back to school not wearing a mask. Moving to talking about vulnerable populations. By doing some quick math, two-point-six percent of children are immunosuppressed multiplied by roughly forty-six thousand ASD students, one can see that roughly one thousand two hundred ASD students are immunosuppressed. I am one of them. Due to my chronic illness, I have to take two immunocompromising medications. Trust me, managing this during a pandemic is not easy. What makes it hard is when the school district decides to remove virtually their only layer of mitigation cases, while cases remain high. I explained in my last testimony how other mitigation measures are ineffective. Due to the nature of masks, one has to rely on others to protect them. By keeping masks, ASD protects all students, but particularly its vulnerable students. Moving to talking about staffing. High school staff members interact with roughly a hundred and forty students every day. It only takes one of the students having COVID to infect that teacher. ASD is struggling with staffing right now and teachers are overworked and overwhelmed. Teachers do not have the bandwidth to cover extra classes and substitutes are underqualified and unavailable. This again hurts students' education. So what will the removal of masks look like? It will be detrimental to students' education both in quarantine and in staffing, and risk the health of ASD students as cases remain high while ASD removes their main mitigation strategy. Please keep masks in schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. Next, we have Nathan Warden, in person. Nathan, welcome. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Nathan Warden. I attend South Anchorage High School. Recently, Superintendent Bishop released a message stating that ASD students and staff will no longer be required to wear masks after February twenty-eighth. With this, the superintendent states that the decision has been made as a way to improve the quality of life for students. I would argue that this decision is not being made for the students at all. One of the primary reasons stated for lifting the school mandated mask policy is that masks have been negatively impacting the education of the students and their emotional well-being. To which I ask, is it not more detrimental to my fellow students' education to be out of school for up to two weeks at a time due to contracting COVID? Is it not more detrimental to my fellow students to sit in classrooms being taught by National Guard members who don't know what they're teaching due to staff shortages? Is it not more detrimental to my fellow students' emotional well-being to see their loved ones get sick because they've been exposed? The reality is that everyone knows somebody with an underlying condition. Some of us are that somebody, and there is nothing more detrimental to our education and our emotional well-being than watching someone we know and love be locked away in a hospital bedroom all alone. COVID numbers are down, sure, but they've been lower and spiked much higher still, which it, would it be so difficult to simply wait until the end of the school year to reevaluate the mask policy? You have us here today, sitting spaced apart, requiring the use of masks, so there's clearly an understanding that the safety precautions work and are necessary to protect you, but when it comes to the students, you do not hold the same standards of safety. Is my life not as valuable as yours? What about the lives of my peers and their families? Despite ASD's efforts to make this look like an action being taken for the students, it is clearly nothing but an incoherent decision that places politics over practicality. I urge you to make the logical, logical choice and go back on your decision, ensuring the safety, emotional well-being and quality education you claim to be in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, continuing on, we have Eve Green, online. Eve Green. Okay, she's not in the queue. Danielle Kemp. Star six to unmute, Mr. Kemp.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Danielle Kemp, retired Army Combat Officer, teacher in the ASD and parent of two ASD kids. Also the president and co-founder of the Coalition of Black Park Educators. The district should not go with a parent choice to masking. This is playing politics with people's lives and it's not funny nor cute and needs to stop before people get needlessly sick or worse, die. However, if you are really adamant about going on with this parent choice of masking, then that choice should come with responsibilities. Either show a negative COVID test for each morning or show that your child is fully vaccinated. Full stop. Last year, HB two-twenty-eight was prefilled and later introduced into the floor of the Alaska Legislature. This is an anti-truth education bill designed to cater to the sensibility of white parents who are scared that their schoolchildren will learn about the realities of race, racism and other various subjects told from the perspective of non-white peoples. I know this bill is in the Alaska Legislature, but it still affects what happens here in the district even if it does not pass. Teachers across America and even right here in the ASD are fearful of these types of laws. They are fearful of being targeted for telling the truth. Indigenous history is under attack, black history is under attack, heck, even white history is under attack, the true history, that is. If the folks introducing these laws have their way, then American history will be nothing more than a collection of fairy tales and stories of benevolent white folks told from only white points of view. The ASD must therefore be our line of defense against such absurdities. We need to know that the ASD has our backs. All right? That we won't be constantly under surveillance or harassed by administrators for teaching the truth. Educators of color won't be punished in their speech curtailed or centered for sharing the history, literature and, yes, music of their own culture. One surefire way to keep the ASD's teacher workforce all white is to punish teachers for telling the truth. That'll send a clear message to any prospective teacher candidate. I mean, no black or brown indigenous teacher in their right mind would dare work or stay in the district for fear of making white parents, administrators, or even fellow white teachers uncomfortable. That's why the ACBE is challenging the ASD to stand up, recruit more teachers of color, and tough as a ball, do what it takes to keep them, which is going to make a lot of white folks uncomfortable, that is, until they learn to get comfortable with the truth. Otherwise, our teacher workforce will be all white from here until the end. Look, even your own equity audit- Look, even your own Equity Audit Today revealed that 93% of white students reported seeing white teachers, while only 0% of Pacific Islander students reported seeing their own. All right, we've got a lot of work to do, ASD. Nobody's getting any younger, so let's roll up our sleeves and do what it takes to make it right. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Next, we have Kristy Brown. Welcome, Kristy. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Kristy Brown, and I have two children in the ASD school district. I'm here in support of and to thank Dr. Bishop for her proposal to move to parent-informed and optional masks within the schools and facilities. I concur that continued mandatory mask-wearing is counterproductive and negatively impacts our students' education, intellectual development, and emotional well-being. As a parent, I am grateful for this change in policy, but I am wary that this board will make a different decision. Health must be addressed on a holistic, broad-spectrum level. In the last two years, COVID has been addressed as if the virus and all of us live in a silo. We do not. There are no randomized control trials proving the effectiveness of masks in the real world. None. Instead, masks are used as a way to help some feel safer, but also fostering fear and division. Health is about so much more than mask-wearing, social distancing, and contact tracing. As a professional who works in the health and wellness field, who talks daily with clients on how to reverse chronic conditions and deals with people that are immunocompromised and has to build their resiliency, I can assure you, masking has never been a topic of conversation. We may have been grappling for research in the last couple of years on how to best navigate COVID, but we have plenty of longstanding research that outlines better outcomes for long-term health and vitality. In fact, there's a study out of Harvard with nearly 80 years' worth of data. This study followed men and eventually more cohorts. Over decades, the objective was to find the biggest influencers of our health and longevity. They studied finances, relationships, jobs, bloodwork, genetics, you name it, they studied it. You know what the biggest influencer of health was? Relationships and how happy people were in those relationships. Loneliness was the biggest killer. On par was smoking and alcoholism. Relationships proved to be most protective of mental and physical decline. Community matters a lot. Now I ask you, board members, when you go home to your spouse or partner, do you continue to wear a mask? When you spend time with close friends and loved ones, do you continue to wear a mask? If not, why not? Our kids were unable to attend school in person for nearly a year. They were cut off from their social connections overnight. We, as parents, had to pick up the pieces and quickly find new ways to allow our kids to still build those connections they so needed. We tried. Then, when they were finally able to return to school, finally able to have day-to-day interactions with their peers and build upon those friendships they so desperately craved, they had to do it all in a mask for a year. Social connection, smiling with friends, and laughing are not insignificant elements to support health. Students being able to hear their teachers, see how they enunciate words, and make facial expressions to support how they communicate are not.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, online, we have Robin Harris. Star six to unmute.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Robin Harris. As the Anchorage Principals Association President, I received school support in writing a letter endorsing our School Resource Officers SRO program. In fact, you can find that statement from APA written in the testimony tonight, submitted by our Vice President, Leica McCauley. While I receive substantial support from our membership, today I'm speaking on behalf of Wayley School as principal. As I'm sure you're aware, Wayley School is a separate day school for students with profound behaviors, learning strategies, and tools to transition back to their neighborhood school. Some will do this, and others will graduate with us, and I consider both successful. Let me tell you just one story that truly shows our need to keep SROs in the Anchorage School District. This happened on a Thursday a few years back. Wayley was about to embark on our third annual gala in Silent Auction, a fundraiser and a big deal. While everyone was finishing up all of the gala tasks, I was on the phone with a student. This adult student had left school early that day, saying that she was tired and signed herself out. Right after school, she called me hysterical. She was sobbing and telling me that she didn't want to live anymore. She kept telling me how she missed her mother, who had passed away just a little over a year before, and she wanted to be with her. The student had also just recently lost two of her cousins to suicide. She was depressed. She began saying that she was going to run out in traffic and get hit. I asked her to find a place to sit so she could talk to me and calm down, but she hung up. I immediately called our School Resource Officers and let them know where the student was based on the information I knew from the beginning of the phone call. They headed out to what they thought was her location. While on the phone with the SROs, my student called back, this time sobbing so hard that I couldn't understand what she was saying other than this suicidal ideation. I left her on speakerphone so that the SROs could hear her and so that they could try to ping her phone. You could hear the cars passing by as she walked near the street. She finally gave me a vague idea of where she was, and the SROs headed to that location. The SROs found her and picked her up and took her to the hospital for a 72-hour watch and for her mental health. I thanked the SROs and knew that she was in good hands. This is just one story of one ASD student that the SROs were able to save in all of the many they had done. In fact, this student went on to present at our principals conference about the support that she had received from ASD and our SROs. I cannot effectively tell you in the short three minutes how important our SROs are to ASD. Wayley School supports our SRO program, their commitment to safety, strong relationships, and to our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Land, online. Heather, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes.
I'm here.
We can hear you. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Heather Land. I have two students at Chuyak Elementary. Tonight, I didn't prepare a long speech because I feel that every time I've spoken, it's just fallen on deaf ears with the board. So I just simply wanted to say that I wanted to thank Lena Bishop for her proposal for mass choice, as it is long overdue, and I hope the board agrees. Masking is counterproductive and ineffective. If masks did work, there would be zero cases in the school for this entire school year, which we all know is not the case. It's time, and I hope that the board will move to vote for mass choice, and I feel there's no need to wait till next week. I hope you start tomorrow. I would like to send my children to school unmasked tomorrow. There's really no need to wait until the 28th. The only other thing I wanted to say was to thank Board Member Donnelly for his continued support of mass choice, and I want to thank all the parents who showed up tonight in support of mass choice, and I'm sorry I can't be there with you. And hopefully, this is the last time we have to have this conversation with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Daniel Pace. Is he online? Okay, we'll come back. What about Eve Green? Is she online? Okay. Moving on, Louis Embriani, in person. Let's try Kristen Bush. Kristen Bush. Star six to unmute, Ashley.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank Dr. Bishop for moving towards parents' choice masking. I have spoken to this board before, both online and in person, about some of the hardships my special needs daughter has faced while starting her first year of school during masking. And I am just so very happy and excited that she's going to get to see a more traditional idea of what school is going to be. She has struggled with speech all her life, and school has so far not helped, but I'm more hopeful now that with other students unmasked, she'll be able to see their faces and see how they pronounce things, and it will help her speech as well. So I'm just very thankful and very excited, and I want to thank you all for giving me, as a parent, this opportunity to send her to school without a mask.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. Next.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dawn Bockelman, in person. Welcome, and you have three minutes.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Dawn Bockelman, and I wanted to thank you all once again for considering removing the mask mandate. The amount of outrage that I've noticed that seems to have ensued by many members of the school district and community since the announcement was made last week is pretty mind-blowing. But as we know, it's often the loudest minority of people that are often heard the most. The truth is, this shouldn't have, this should have always been a choice. If anyone would like to confront me about, with all of their scenarios, I'm sorry, about why they think masking should continue indefinitely, please feel free to approach me after the meeting. I'm happy to oblige, but I'm not going to sit here and regurgitate all of the studies, most of which can be shot down in an instant, when we all know this is no longer just science, but politics as well. It's funny to me that teachers and district members that are worried about their own children continuing to mask when the mandate is potentially removed, but the problem is that no one is saying that they can't. I fully support your right as parents to ensure that your child wears a mask if that's what you would like. And as a teacher, I fully support any teacher who decides that they need to do the same. What I cannot understand, though, is the people that are standing up for this right to continue masking and simultaneously demanding that everyone that disagrees with them continue to wear masks as well. Even more confusing are those adults having nothing short of a tantrum, thinking they should be able to decide whether or not someone else's child wears a mask. This whole "my mask protects you, your mask protects me" idea that we're shoving down kids' throats is ridiculous. Unless we're all actually wearing something better than cloth masks, then I don't see how this logic sticks, not to mention the mental manipulation that's connected with it. Another argument I'm sure you're going to hear tonight is that children under the age of five aren't able to be vaccinated yet, and that's great, and I understand that people are worried about their kids. But I'd like to see a study, a reasonable study, that says children are even at risk, because I have yet to find one. That's because statistically, they aren't. Vilifying people that point this out by insinuating that they're okay with even one person dying from this virus is childish and wildly off-base. I don't know a single person, let alone a single teacher, left, right, or center that is flippantly okay with death. So what's the argument going to be this time? Last time, it was that we need to wait until after winter break to see what happens, and I'm sure this year, or this time, it'll be, let's wait till the end of the year. And here we are, holding on. I'm not sure what the science behind only masking at school is and no place else, because who's really going to do a study about that? Because it doesn't make a lot of sense. It sounds like Mark Twain was right when he said it's easier to fool people than to convince them they have been fooled. I know I personally was fooled at the beginning of all of this and have come to change my mind a lot. I let it go, and I am hoping that the board decides.
Thank you very much. Joe, I think it's Barhle. Christina Kluber. Did I say it right, Christina? No? Okay, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Christina Kluber. I testified in January, asking you to end the mask mandates, and I'm here again. Last time, I asked you all to consider children like mine with anxiety and speech issues when you make the decision, and clearly, my voice has been ignored. The same things keep getting repeated, that we have to follow the guidelines of the doctors and the scientists for our children's health. I emailed Alaska's chief medical officer. I've emailed Dr. Singh several, several times over the course of this pandemic, and she's always had the class and courtesy to respond, despite our differences in opinions on certain subjects. I would like to add that not one person on this board, besides Mr. Donnelly, has ever responded to my emails. I've even left you, Mrs. Bellamy, some voice messages. I understand that you may not want to respond to someone with a different opinion as yours, but that's part of your job and being an adult. We teach our children to take on conflict with open communication and open minds, but that principle also needs to be applied here. One of my biggest concerns during the two years of dealing with this pandemic has been our children's mental health. Mental health is a huge issue we face today with our children, and in my opinion, a much more pressing one than COVID. These closures, ridiculous rules, and masks have taken an absolute devastating toll on our kids. That has been one of the things I had emailed Doctors Think About. I emailed her, asking if there was any information she might be able to give me that I could take before the board, and I told her I would bring this information here if I thought that it could change someone's mind. She did open her email by saying, "Thank you for your email, Christina. I hope you and your family are well, and we get asked a lot about masks these days, and this is what we've been sharing from our health team. As the COVID-19 pandemic evolves, strategies for how and when to use these masks continue to evolve. Not wearing a mask can be more comfortable, increase a person's ability to interpret facial expressions, and may be beneficial for social development and mental health. Please hear those words again carefully when you think about all these kindergartners and little kids going into school for the first time wearing a mask, and kids like mine who are in speech therapy." One of the other key points to her email, she states, "Masks offer the greatest benefit to those with severe illness." These are not our kids. We're all watching these videos of children rejoicing as they get to remove the masks in our school. State by state, these mandates are being dropped, and it is time for Anchorage as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. And on the phone, we have Niall Sherwood Williams. Niall Sherwood Williams. Not there. Natalia, in person. Natalia Gravogel. Can you help me out with that, please? Gravogel? Okay. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Natalia Gravogel, and I have two children in the district that I'm here to testify, in the district, and I'm here to testify in support of Dr. Bishop's proposal to drop the mask mandate in the district. Approximately one year ago, I testified here and shared my concerns as a licensed professional counselor about the psychological impact that our children were experiencing with the mask mandate. And so it was no surprise to me to hear from Dr. Bishop that there has been a developmental and psychological impact on our children. This is my third time testifying in front of this board, and after hearing other testimonies this past year, I highly suspect that the continuation of forcing children to mask has nothing to do with the science or the data, but has everything to do with receiving millions of dollars from the federal government. I understand that in order to receive this COVID relief money, the district would have to follow CDC guidelines, which require every child to be masked in school. It makes sense now why private schools were able to stay open, have mass choice policy, and why I've heard testimonies from various mothers with special needs children that their mask exemptions were denied. For parents and ASD employees that are in favor of keeping every child masked, I want to ask why. We have a vaccine for families and employees that wish to be vaccinated. Numbers in Anchorage are dropping, and the Omicron variant is no worse than the common cold. For the parents that are in favor of keeping the mandate, if the board vetoes to drop the mandate, you can continue to mask your child at school because you know what's best for your child. There are many decisions as parents make that differ from yours. So why do you want to impose your beliefs into another parent's child? Every parent has the right to make decisions that affect the physical, developmental, and psychological health of their child. I want to share something that my daughter recently shared with my friend. My friend asked my daughter what she likes the most at school. My daughter answered, "When I get to sneak a peek at my teacher's face when she pulls her mask down to drink coffee." My daughter's in kindergarten, and she thinks this is normal to not see her teacher's face. The federal government does not have enough funds to correct the psychological impact that these mandates have on our children. I have lost all faith in the Anchorage School District, not only with these... Excuse me. I have lost all faith in the Anchorage School District, not only with these mandates, but even academically. It's apparent to me that what parents concern, their tears, my tears, and student testimonies have no effect on your policy and decision-making. But I know money has an effect. So I'm going to stay here on the record. I will be removing my children from the district and sending them to private school or homeschool program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Rachel Reese. Is it Reese or Rice? Reese. Welcome, and you have three minutes. I need to remind, the decorum in the boardroom is no applause. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Rachel Reese. I am here to say that I support Dina Bishop's proposal to make masks at parent choice. I've testified here many times about the masks, and you've never heard me. I have a disabled child. He can't go to school as long as we're wearing masks. You are disenfranchising an entire section of the student population by making it mandatory. To make it parent choice doesn't mean that your child can't wear a mask. To make it employee choice doesn't mean that you, as an adult, can't wear a mask. It does mean my child can go to school. So I would ask that you vote to get rid of masks. Sorry, it makes me upset when I think about how much my child has lost in the last year. I'm also here to say I support the SRO program, and I am appalled that there is even a discussion to defund them. Police officers have very few opportunities to interact with the public in positive ways. This is a way for them to do that. They provide a valuable service. You cannot measure it. Is this a "defund the police" action? Is that what you're doing? I would want an answer to that question. And finally, I've heard a member of this board say that you're not teaching CRT in school, but your website says aggressively support social emotional learning and reparations. But CRT. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Martin Hanson. Martin Hanson? There you go. Welcome, Mr. Hanson. You have three minutes.
I'm here to talk about Inlet View School, as requested by the South Edition Community Council to the neighborhood.
Oh, can you turn, yeah, there it is.
Am I better now?
Mm-hmm. That's better. Thank you.
All right. So we have two members added to the Inlet View School Building Design Committee at the request of the South Edition Community Council. These members were elected by the community council, and they've brought valuable suggestions to the building design committee. But on February 8th, there was a school board meeting. School boards checking in to see how neighborhood concerns, and you've heard many of them, about the Inlet View redesign were being addressed. Every member of the building design committee was informed or invited, except for those two members, the two new members. I would have thought, after we heard from Neil Spudsmann about open meeting and openness, that wouldn't have happened. And I'm sorry that it did. I have a second point. The school district has, you find them online, educational specifications for elementary schools includes planning specifications. That's for the design of schools and campuses. And the one I've been looking at, of course, has been for elementary schools. The proposed design that we have been looking at since September violates these specifications. Well, I was counting them back there. I came up with nine, and I'm not going to do a PowerPoint and read these. I'll have to, but I'm going to do a short list, and then I would like to email them to you later. I think it fails accessibility goals, safety and security, because the new school ground layout makes it harder to see where the kids and people who aren't kids are on the school ground. Disaster contingency. Schools are supposed to be a rallying point in case of disaster. Well, this school's on the highest seismic risk zone in Anchorage, where the proposed school is. Community use and collaboration. Well, we're losing one of the few good soccer, football training fields in Anchorage, because the school's going to be built on it. There's an odd one about site planning that says, "Plan should reference the manuals," and I haven't seen any manual references on the plan. General site goals. It should be sensitive to the neighborhood scale, context, and climate, and it isn't. Thank you. That was all I wanted to say, and I do promise I will send you the link to all that. And thank you all for doing your work here. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Next, in person, we have Rayanne Bezloris. Can you rep me, please?
Deloria.
Deloria? Okay, thank you.
I'm coming to speak in front of you guys. I don't really have anything written up because I have emailed you guys. I have given you statistics. I have sent you guys links on the damage that masks are doing to our children. And because of the decisions that you guys have made, my children are suffering mentally and physically. I am not going to go into detail about their health issues, but they are documented health issues that they have because of masking in school. And you guys did that by voting for that. And so now, I need you to support Dr. Bishop's proposal today to unmask our children, or I'm going to have to make the hard decision to pull my kids out of school, which my daughter loves school. She loves it so much. But she hates wearing a mask. My son hates it. Every day that they go to school, they complain that they don't, that they don't get to see their friends, that they have a mask on. And so I'm going to have to make the hard decision to pull them out of school and homeschool them, or make the hard decision to leave my husband for the last year of his station up here and go back home to where my family is, where they live a normal life with no masks. And my sisters get to go to school and have a normal life. And I will do that for my children and take them out of your school district if that's what it means for them to live a normal life. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next, we have in person, Ginger Jackson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, and thank you. I am here in support of Dr. Bishop's proposal of parent-informed optional masking. I'm a high school teacher, as well as a mom of two ASD students. I'm not here alone. I have the support of many parents and staff who agree that it's past time to release the mandates. As teachers, we're continually pressed to make data-informed decisions. And yet, the district has continued to enforce mask mandates that are not informed by data. As Board Member Donley shared at the last meeting, the study supporting masking in schools that is cited by the CDC has been found to have serious errors and should be considered invalid. I know there are many teachers who are scared, and to them, I ask, why have so many European countries and even the World Health Organization recommended against mandating masks in schools? The truth is that there's no conclusive evidence that it is beneficial. Why does the CDC continue to recommend universal indoor masking then? Perhaps because they are nothing more than political appointees. They don't care about our students. Their job is to further the message of the administration who appointed them. And just as I teach my students, I will remind you to check your sources and beware of potential bias. Furthermore, like we've heard, more evidence is coming to light that masking children may actually be harmful. Evidence suggests that mask enforcement promotes isolation and breeds fear, which only fuels mental health struggles. We can all agree that masking is a serious hindrance for students who struggle with speech, reading, or experience hearing loss. I'm deaf on my left side, and I know my students are tired of me constantly asking them to repeat. Bottom line, it's not right that our youth, who are the least at risk of serious illness from COVID, have been and continue to be burdened with the most restrictions. In fact, more youth have died from fentanyl overdoses last year than COVID. But here we are, still debating mask mandates while the true killer remains at large. I love my job as a teacher. But by far, my most important job is a mom. And along with my husband, I will no longer let elected officials and politically-appointed bureaucrats who don't even know my kids continue to overreach and determine what is best for my family's health. My husband and I will decide if it's necessary for our boys to wear a mask. My husband and I will weigh the risks of the virus versus the risks to their mental health. My husband and I will do our own research, and we will be the parents. Lifting these mandates doesn't eliminate the opportunity for someone to decide if they or their child need to wear a mask. It simply transfers the decision of power to parents where it belongs. And as we talked earlier about the math testing data, I was sitting there thinking about the fact that students who have parental support and involvement typically perform better. So don't close the door on parents by making the decisions on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, telephonically, Rihanna Gay. Star six to unmute. Yes, I think we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Perfect. Thank you. Hello, board. My name is Rihanna, and I am a community member and a member of the Alaska Black Caucus. Tonight, I will share two items. The first being a thank you for approving, or thank you in advance for approving our collective bargaining agreement. Please note that your staff is doing everything we can to make ASD the best place to teach, learn, and grow. We do need that in return. Listening to educators, supporting students, and following science is how we move as a cohesive body. The second item I would like to share is culturally, we are a diverse district. Research has shown that BIPOC individuals are affected immensely by COVID-19. Please think of our diverse students and community. The thing, the thinking that mask wear plays, masking wears, mask wearing plays a huge role on the mental health of our students is a little off or absurd. There are many other bigger factors that include poverty, home life, family dynamics, health, et cetera, that take priority in mental health. To think that we use science to tell us what reading program best suits the needs of learners is wonderful, which is why, which is why, in turn, we must use that same science base to understand the importance of masking and caring for others. A mask is not a big ask. Since COVID-19, our attendance and student count is lower. With this new policy, I can only take an educated guess that our attendance will decrease as well. It is not a huge, it is not that huge of an inconvenience, and if it means saving one child, teacher, or relative, it's worth it. Parents, my parents, I love you. I really do. But instead of worrying about when we will mask or unmask, please, educators have other requests. Bring your child on time every day to school, ready to learn. Teach them the kindness and compassion. And for those parents who are already mastered these skills, a huge thank you and an air hug. As an educator, I honestly have never walked into your workplace and demanded to make safety decisions. You have trusted us this far in the process, so what is in the quarter for protecting all? Think about the end-of-the-year activities such as prom, graduations, and ceremonies could be jeopardized if we unmask too quickly. There is an article stating that lifting mask mandates makes sense during times of low case counts. But ASC, please be ready to re-mask if variants emerge. Please let us use what we continue have had, such as reverse testing and symptom-checking strategies. We can't wear masks forever, I know, but if you can, but if you can't have five to 10 kids missing of school each day. Thank you, ASC. I know that we can do this together. We are in it to win it.
Thank you. Next, we have Dave Carter. Mr. Carter, are you on? Yes, I see him.
Can you hear me?
We, yes, we can. You can, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Bishop for her January 7th statement, wherein she noted that January 6, 2021, was not only an attack on our, on the Capitol Building, but on democracy itself. And she also reminded us that it's incumbent on public school educators everywhere to teach our children to respect our institutions and the various processes that make our government function. One of those processes, of course, is confirming the popular vote and the electoral vote, and the actual facts for those can be found at FEC.gov, which is the Federal Elections Commission.gov. And so Joe Biden and Kamala Harris won both the popular vote and the electoral vote. These are just the facts from our accepted government institutions about the final popular and electoral votes for our 2020 presidential election. It is important to note that one of our various processes to ensure fairness includes the right of a candidate to request a recount of votes within the prescribed timeframes after the election. The ex-president did use these opportunities on multiple occasions. It was wonderfully reassuring to everyone who believes in fair elections and in the various processes that make our government function, that those recounts very accurately verified, that the hand recounts matched machine recounts. Another one of these various processes that we respect is our court system, like recounts, the legal process was used and available to ex-president Trump in approximately 60 cases. And legal challenges, of course, must be supported by admissible evidence. unsupported or false statements do not, do not support legal challenges. When a court repeatedly told us that no evidence of irregularities existed, then we can also rest assured that another process to ensure a fair election worked again in 2020 presidential election. Because of the timelines involved, our processes did not allow losers to continue challenging election results. The states need to certify their presidential electors after the elections. They did so on December 14, 2020. And that's why Dr. Bishop could in early January say that, you know, the attack on the Capitol was an attack on democracy itself. I just did want to wrap up with a basic point, that we need to unite and not divide Americans about how fair our presidential election was, and that Joe Biden and Kamala Harris are our fairly elected president and vice president. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you very much. Next, telephonically, we have Joan Wilson. Joan, star six to unmute. Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I came to testify before this board in September, very concerned about the mandatory mask decision. And I recall at that meeting that what was really stated was that the desire of the board to follow the recommendation of the superintendent. And that's why I am so pleased today to call in support of Superintendent Bishop's decision to make masks optional. And I really welcome, and I expect, the board to honor and support that decision. I have a daughter in eighth grade at Goldenview. She's had detention three times this year. This is a girl who's never had a, an issue like that in her, in her entire history. When one of her friends was over, and I came down after reading Superintendent Bishop's email to tell these five unmasked children in my home that they didn't have to wear masks at school, beginning next Monday, one girl said, "Oh, but I want to wear a mask." And I said, "Is it because you're afraid of COVID?" And she said, "No, I don't want people to see my face." This is an eighth-grade girl with a beautiful face. There is a saying from Saint Ignatius that I've used for my life, and it's "Learn not to be afraid." And I ask everyone who is afraid of letting parents make the right, make the choice for their children, or high schoolers to make the choice for themselves, to not be afraid. We are not here to... We are not here to hurt you. I hope the teachers and the entire student body encourage the children that want to mask or whose parents would want them to mask to not be singled out. And that it be just a welcome environment for children to make the choice that they prefer. I heard those two beautiful kids from South High, I want them to be safe. And I hope they had N95 masks because the cloth masks are not, are not working. It's time. Learn not to be afraid. Let's address this in other ways as well. Please encourage healthy bodies, encourage good food, encourage everything we can do to make our immune system strong. This pandemic is an endemic.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Frank Ruder, telephonically. Star six to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Frank Ruder. I'm a principal at Benny Benson. We're an alternative school in Anchorage and I've worked for the district for 30 years. And I've been an administrator for 24. I think I'm the only administrator that's still working, that was working before the SRO program started. And at the time, we thought that they were going to replace the school's security. And we were all real worried about that. And that turned out not to be the case. Before we had SROs, we, we, meaning administrators and school security, we're constantly dealing with non-students that came to the school to find someone that they were mad at or that owed them money or that potentially was a new business associate. And so since the SROs have been involved, we haven't had to deal with all of those factions from the community that would come to school for all the wrong reasons. And so that's been, it's been really nice and it makes schools a lot safer. Trying to talk on my phone and read my notes on my phone at the same time. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a student that you guys probably reviewed his case earlier in your closed-door meeting about being expelled from school. And he had a meltdown and put our school into stay-put mode. And Sergeant Reynolds came and dealt with that student. And at the time, I was, I was amazed at how Sergeant Reynolds talked that guy off the ledge and got him calmed down, diffused the situation, and worked with a kid that was having some psychological problems. That's not always the case. When we just call the Maldoon cops to come in, you know, I, I'm confident that kid would have got tased and thrown in the cop car right away, and that didn't happen. And so that's just one example. And like Robin said, her story, I have many stories and I'd be happy to come in and talk to the school board about that. Getting rid of the SROs to increase funding for mental health supports for kids is kind of like getting rid of math to focus more on reading. And so the answer is pretty obvious. We need to do both. It's really important that we can support kids emotionally, but that we have the partnership with the police. And finally.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sandra Tompkins. Sandra, telephonically. Okay, I don't see her. Let's try in person. Is it Marta Muntin? Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Do I turn this on or?
It's on.
Okay. Hi, my name is Marta Muntin. I'm here to voice my support for mask choice. Last fall, when the majority decided to reinforce masks, I pulled last minute my two, two of my three kids and enrolled them into a private school where there is choice. It ended up being a blessing in disguise for my two children. It's an academically rigorous school and I am now watching them thrive at the school where masks are a choice, are a choice for parents. There are some families that choose to have their children in masks and that's their choice. And I just love to invite you guys to come and tour the school. It's just amazing. But side note, I still have a young, my youngest child who has trisomy 21 and she is in kindergarten with a special, a special education. And for her, the special education is the best fit, so she remains in ASD. A vital component of learning and development is nonverbal communication and in facial expression. For my child who is speech delay, cognitively delayed, and many other delays, this is a vital part of her development and her learning. And, and it's, it just breaks my heart that she, she, not only is she not able to express herself, but she's not able to read her teacher's expressions and such. Not only is ASD not meeting her IEP, but you are inhibiting her development with masks. I want to reiterate that there are thriving private schools here in this community and, and thriving people in the community who choose not to wear masks. You see them in the grocery stores. You see them in restaurants. I myself rarely wear a mask. And, and, and we've been exposed to COVID, but we've also thrived. And my, my children's grandparents are doing well. And, and so we're doing well. We're family and we're choosing these things for ourselves. So I just really want to encourage that you take Dr. Bishop's recommendation for mask choice. Not only for children like my daughter, but also for typically developing children who really need and thrive at interpersonal communication. It feels like at this point in time, masks just feel like a political theater. And so I just want to encourage you just to, let's just cut through and, and allow families to make decisions for their children and for their families. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. And I hope that you do the right thing.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dave Bronson, Mayor Bronson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President and Board. I appreciate this opportunity. I just want to speak in favor of the SRO program, the continued funding of the SRO program. I want to commend Anchorage School District leadership for including funding for the School Resource Officer Program in the 2023 school year budget. My administration recognizes the valuable partnership between the municipality of Anchorage and the Anchorage School District to deliver this important program to ensure the safety of our children while they are at school. The municipality of Anchorage remains committed to the safety and security of our students, teachers, and Anchorage School District staff through this program. We strongly encourage the school board to keep the funding for this program in the budget. Our children, our children deserve a safe and secure learning environment. Through the funding of this program, the municipality and the school district demonstrate our collaboration and commitment to our students' safety and security. A copy of this letter I'll leave with you, Madam President. And just as a sidebar, I just have to add how important this, this, this program is. History will not treat well those people who defund a program that literally saves lives in our schools. If we defund this program, something's going to happen. Eventually, it's going to happen. We've had some close calls that were reverted by the school resource officers. If they're not there, history will not treat us as public servants well if we defund this program. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, and thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Rob, is it Uli, Ulu? Looks like U, U-I-U or U-L-U. Rob, is there Rob in the house? No, that's not right. That's not right. Okay. Dustin Darden. You need to wear your masks, sir. Thank you.
I request a interpreter. Does that have a, have a speech impediment when I'm wearing this? According to ADA, I request an interpreter.
That, that request has to be made before the meeting, sir. We do not just, no, you did do, I don't think you requested one. I don't see on the record where there was a requested.
Is there one available?
No, sir.
I'd like a whiteboard. Is it possible to get a whiteboard?
Could you get a what? A whiteboard?
Illustrate because of my disability.
Do we have a whiteboard anywhere? Is there a whiteboard? So.
Paulie Kendall said we need whiteboards. So I'd like a whiteboard because of my disability. So I can express myself through.
Mr. Darden, special requests need to be.
Can I use that whiteboard back there?
Special requests need to be made in advance. You did not do so. So either you testify now or we will go to the next person on the list.
Okay, yes, ma'am. I will actually start my presentation once I transfer the data from the.
We're going to start your time.
Okay. You want me to wear the face covering during the oral presentation? I'd like to not wear it for the record. Okay, now this medical device, which you're insisting that I wear, is a violation of the Nuremberg Code. And it's a crime against humanity because it is in fact a medical device. So the indictments are coming. And you have failed the people. You, everyone on this dais that has not done everything their powers to stop the biomedical tyranny of making children wear oxygen-depriving, bacterial pneumonia-inducing, social normalities hindering, children made in the image of God muffling vibrations of healing, dousing, are going to be held. And the maximum penalty for violations of the Nuremberg Code, when tried and convicted by your peers, is death. And that's where you guys are headed. So the best thing you can do is come clean and stop this insanity. Stop coercing the children to take an HIV injection and stop taking money from Pfizer and the Italian militarized contractors that want to biomedically implant the children as you radiate them in Bartlett High School and Romig-Windler High School. I've seen the numbers. What you're doing to these children with your so-called intercom systems. And you just stop censoring people. It's disgusting. And Kelly Lessons, I'm going to take your job.
Do not. You may not do that, sir.
According to US, New York Times versus Sullivan, you cannot hinder my speech. And it was clearly stated in the highest court of the land that you can't censor people. And I want that time back on the clock.
Point of order. Point of order.
Very out of order.
Point, state your, we have a point of order, Mr. Darden, and you do not oversee, you do not supersede that. Your time is up, Mr. Darden. Your time is up. Your time is up. Next, on our, our agenda, or not our agenda, but our list is Star Marsette. She's not on. Okay. So that completes our public comment section. We will take a five-minute. And you are? Oh, I did call you, sir. I did. Why don't you come forward? I did. I just called you just minutes before.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks for the opportunity to come and speak to the school board. Thank you, Dr. Deena Bishop, for your recent decision to stop mandatory mask wearing for children. I was, I sent you an email regarding an incident that happened over at Mir's Middle School on February the 8th. It was on the same evening that you were actually having the board meeting to discuss bringing masking in as an option for parents. I don't have the email in front of me, but I'm just going to kind of speak to a couple of the salient points of the email. And I sent that to Dave as well. Basically, I went into a gym auditorium to observe my son's basketball game. And I was approached by various faculty members insisting that I wear a mask. And I, my son goes to Hanchu Middle School, never been required to wear one. Went into Mir's and I was just literally just badgered about this mask thing by the faculty, coaches, and then the assistant principal. And I basically was telling him, look, I, I'm looking around in this auditorium and there's probably 200 people there. The children are not wearing masks, thank God, participating in an athletic activity. The coach was not wearing a mask. The referees were not wearing masks. And yet, for some strange reason, there's a magical line between myself spectating and encouraging my son and the rest of his teammates and even his opponents to hustle, have good sportsmanship, interact, play hard. Let's enjoy ourselves being out for the evening at a sporting event. So here I am sitting there watching referees, officiators, and coaches and so forth, not wearing their masks, and walking up to me and insisting that I wear one. I just, I just couldn't believe it. I'm like, listen, it, it is hypocrisy. It's unscientific. There is no magic line between me as a spectator and a parent of two children enrolled in ASD and a person that was born and raised in Anchorage and a business owner and an adult. It's like, look, only a rational mind can see that there is no science between me not wearing a mask and the referee that walked up to me and insisted that I wear a mask. He then threatened me and said, look, if you don't put the mask on. And he looked at me and I said, or what? And he said, I'm going to call the assistant principal and have him come down here. And I said, look, please do. Let's have a conversation. My point being is there was a lot of hypocrisy there. And strangely enough, one of the people in the faculty said that I had been screaming the F-word at the game. A falsehood. I'd like to have some form of video evidence showing that I was out of hand or causing a disturbance at that game because it would be completely out of character for me. I did not do that. I would like to have that judgment expunged from my record and be reinstated.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Dr. Bishop will follow up with you. Thank you. Okay. That brings us back to our agenda. And we are now on item E. Our consent, voting on our consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
There's a motion. There's, it's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda consisting of memorandum number 074 and memorandum number 082. We'll have to do a roll call vote because we have one person virtual.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
There it is. Oh, yes, that memorandum, that motion passes. Uh, seven yeas. And so that the consent agenda is approved. We will now take a five-minute recess. We will be right back. We are now back in order. I'm not gonna do business with him talking like that. I'm not. Thank you. We are back. This brings us to action item F.
I move to to approve the expulsions.
We're gonna call a five-minute recess. Okay, we would like to welcome everybody back. We now call the meeting back to order. We are on F one on our agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the expulsions of the students associated with ASD incident numbers one three three four seven zero three and one three three four seven zero one, as was discussed in executive session tonight.
Need a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the uncontested student hearings report that we were given in executive session. We'll have to do a voice vote.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And the uncontested student hearings, a motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, item F F four, which is our memorandum number ninety-one.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero nine one and adopt the tentative agreement between the Anchorage School District and the Totem Association, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in the association during the period between July one, two thousand twenty-one, and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number zero nine one. Is there any public testimony? Yes, come forward, please. Welcome.
Good evening, Anchorage School Board, Dr. Bishop, and the Anchorage School District team. I am Sandy Thompson Wallace, President of Totem Association of Educational Support Personnel, the dedicated group of employees who have been working tirelessly for the past seven months across this district without a contract. Tonight, I am pleased to notify you that our members have ratified the tentative agreement memorandum ninety-one that you have on the agenda for approval at this meeting. First, I want to recognize my negotiations team for their hard work and fortitude. We began our negotiations in October of two thousand twenty, sixteen months ago. No one could have foreseen the length of time it would come to take, would take to come to an agreement. Their perseverance should be commended, and I appreciate each one of them for their expertise and experience they brought to the table. My thanks to Alicia Woods, Amanda Marley, Joan Kirkpatrick, Karen Louder Strobe, Jean Carpenter, and Jennifer Madsen. You are all rock stars in my book. While we have taken important steps to recognize the value that Totem employees bring to this district through the negotiation process, there are those who still feel it is not enough. Totem will continue to speak for our employees and work to lift them up as we move forward. This successor contract has good, positive changes that will be of benefit to our employees, and we will strive to keep that forward momentum in the forefront when we come back to the table in just twenty short months. It will be here before we know it. I thank you for your consideration in approving this successor contract this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandy? Dr. Bishop?
Madam President, may I just take a moment to make a statement?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, it is my honor, as well as the honor of the administration, to uh, grant Sandy Thomas her twenty-five-year pin. Sandy began in our district, actually September fourth, nineteen ninety-six. And so she has earned this and a few months. And uh, seeing her here this evening, we wanted to publicly thank you for your leadership and your steadfastness and your support of staff and students in ASD. We thank you greatly.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Sandy. Thank you.
And for those that were wondering, it's a green stone. Every five years, we get a different stone.
All right, so we have a a motion before us to approve memorandum number ninety-one, the adoption of the memorandum number 91, the adoption of the Totem, tentative Totem Association agreement. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I will be voting in support of this. Reading the contract earlier today, I took the time. When you look at the range of positions that are entailed within Totem, it underscores the importance of our entire school staffing system, and I feel like this year has really brought that whole system, that whole infrastructure, to light. And so I hope to each and every one of the Totem employees that this new contract language shows how much they are deeply valued in our school system.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Other comments? Yes. Member Holloman, and then Member Wilson.
I'd also be voting in support. I do feel like looking ahead, that we are going to have to look at positions in schools. Having spent some time working as a teacher, I know what Totem does. I know what the I know what the certificated staff does. I know what the support staff does. And it's all critical in that so many different kids come into our buildings every day. Somebody has to connect with them, and it's not always their classroom teacher. It's not always librarian. It is sometimes the person in front of office, or it's the person working the hallways, or it's people in the cafeteria. They're all part of the team that makes a good school work, and the job gets tougher. It gets tougher as positions are eliminated. It gets tougher as the expectations rise. It gets tougher as people have less time to do the job that they feel like they need to do. So I I do think we don't recognize our support staff enough. I'm hoping as we move forward, we can do things to to fully have them involved in the education process that we need for them to be involved in. But approval of a contract is always a good thing, but I do think we've got a lot more to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Wilson?
So one of the things Member Holloman just said was sometimes students connect with a variety of staff members, and it reminded me that one of my daughters who attended Denali Montessori, so they were in the same class for three years, for the first year and a half, did most of her communication through one of the Totem members in that classroom. So she, she was a vital part to her education, and I really appreciate that, and she knows who she is because we still love her. I just wanted to say that I was a Totem member. I actually worked for ASD years ago as a bilingual tutor, and I understand how much heart and soul these members put into their students, put into their schools, and how hard the work is. So I really do appreciate all of the work they do, and I appreciate our Totem staff very much.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Alrighty, so as a person who, I also want to thank the Totem negotiations team, the ASD team. You guys found some common ground, and you made it work. And it will only get better together. So I think it's time for us to vote. I see no other comments. Katie?
The student vote?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And memorandum number 91 passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 092, an adopt tentative agreement between the Anchorage School District and the Anchorage Education Association, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in the association during the period between July 1, 2021, and June 30, 2024.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to adopt memorandum, approve memorandum number 92, the tentative agreement with the Anchorage Education Association. Is there anyone who wants to speak, testify, or speak to this item? Seeing none? Is there any discussion? Comments from the board? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank the AEA and administration for the thorough and fruitful negotiation process. I think this is a contract that rightfully puts resources in the pockets of our educators, as well as demonstrates our value for the hardworking folks in the front of classrooms every day. I think with the hopeful passage of the contract tonight, we can turn our attention to other ways that the district and we as a board can support our educators, like by working with our partners locally in Juno to address the retirement system, and then as well here in the district to address making sure the communication up and down the chain of command here is viable and folks are feeling heard. So thanks again. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Any other comments? Member Holloman?
Also, I'd say that I support this contract, and it ultimately, whatever the board does, whatever the administration does, every morning on a weekday, it falls to teachers to make it work. And I think at times, we forget that, that we just have to give more credit to what has to be done in the classroom to make make it happen every, every day. And kind of the same thing. I think settling a contract helps, lets everybody refocus, as Member Jacob said, and focus on what they really want to be thinking about. I hope in the future that we can settle them closer to the expiration date and with a lot less controversy. But thank teachers for voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
On the radio the other day, I heard a story about a teacher in a district somewhere else, and all that teacher really wanted to do, I don't know if this is appropriate, was to make kick-ass lesson plans. I hope this contract allows our teachers to do just that, to really focus their energy on the work of teaching. I appreciate their work.
Thank you very much. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to, for a frame of reference here, my mom joined the AEA in 1960. She was one of the first five school nurses ever hired by the Anchorage School District. So I kind of grew up with this bargaining unit. And one of the things this contract does is eliminate the requirement for a master's degree to receive the full increase for university credits that would be equal to a master's degree, not actually having to get the master's degree. And I just remember how hard, for how many years, my mother worked to get her master's in public health nursing. And I think actually getting the master's degree has meaning. It has meaning. And so I'm sorry to see it go in this contract, in that aspect. There are other concerns that I have that I have articulated since December of 2020 regarding these negotiations. Most of the members weren't here at that time, but I strongly advocated that we negotiate for a longer school day, because even 15 minutes would be very helpful, I believe, to our students. It would, it would give us the leeway to go from 45 minutes to a full hour for lunch and recess, which our youngest kiddos, I think, really need, and for our older students, it would give them a more instructional time. And we know that over the life of a student in our district, from K through 12, they're getting as much, as little, let me put this this way. We have the shortest school day and the shortest school year of any state in the Union, the combination of the two. And what happens over 13 years of that is that some of our kids are getting as much as a year and a half less actual instruction time as kids in some other states. That's a huge gap. Now, it's, the point has been made that that's not the only reason why we have the scores we have, and I agree with that. But it sure seems like a reason for what's going on. And so I was really hoping if we get just another 15 minutes for kiddos there, and that's for our kids. And once again, everything I'm going to talk about here is focused on the children. What was best for our students, in my personal opinion. So I also advocated that we try to seek a longer school year. So once again, even one or two days of more instructional time, I think, would have been helpful to our students. And then I supported the administration's original request that we restore the authority to principals that was taken away three years ago to actually go in the classroom and ensure that there's a lesson plan there, available at all times. So whenever a substitute teacher comes in, they can go right there, and they'll be guaranteed that what they're going to be having to instruct that day is there in front of them. And that clear authority was removed three years ago, and the administration asked us to advocate for its restoration, and we supported that, but it's not in this contract. And I think that's not serving our students as well as we should have in this contract. There's no agreement in this contract for the minimum number of direct instructional hours if we ever have to go back to panemonic virtual learning again. And I was a strong opponent of the decision that this district made to only have one hour per day instruction, four days a week, of actual minimum instruction by our instructors. Now, lots of them did better than that. Some of them didn't do any at all, but the minimum, I felt, was not appropriate. And I advocated that we negotiate into the collective bargaining agreement, doing the collective bargaining process, something better than one hour a day if we ever have to go back to that virtual learning again. That's just not acceptable. And we all know what happened nationally in the United States with the scores and the amount of learning that our kids lost in those years. My children lost learning that year. And one hour a day was not enough to keep them up to where they should be, and they deserved better. So I thought for our students, we should have fought for that harder. I was particularly disappointed that we weren't successful in achieving a clear understanding that we could pay more, actually pay more to some of the hard-to-find positions that we've got, particularly in in speech therapy and in other specialists in the special education area, where we've got many, many unfilled positions because we're not meeting, it's supply and demand. It's simple economics. But the union opposed giving us that authority. And we have sort of a tacit understanding now that we might be able to give some extra funds, but it's not clear in the contract. I think we should have made, been able to achieve, and I still am befuddled by the union opposed this, paying their members more for the high, the difficult-to-fill jobs that we need to fill to provide for our students. I think that's really a gaping hole in this contract. We as employers should have the ability to pay more if we have to fill a position that our kids need, and the union fought that, and I still don't understand that logic. So, you know, you put it opposed to where I grew up in construction trades. People, there are people doing blasters. Blasters got paid more than if you were digging a ditch, and that was fine. We never objected to that. I don't understand why that doesn't come across into the educational system too. And if there's people that have extra skills, extra abilities, we can't fill those positions, we as, we have a duty to our students to try to do that, because merely contracting out is not the same as actually having employees. So I'm really disappointed in that, and I tried really hard, beginning in December of 2020, to get the board at that time, and it was mostly different people here, you know, different board members, to begin to go point by point and be very clear about what we were going to advocate for and what we wanted to see in this contract for our students. And at the time, I was told repeatedly by other board members, oh, we'll get to that. We'll get to that. We don't have to do that right now. But I was very concerned then that it was going to get delayed and then get confused, and then when it came time for us to actually, as a board, vote, and that's all I ever asked for, was an up-and-down vote. Are we going to fight for this? Are we going to fight for that? And whatever the majority said, that was the way it was going to be. But we never did that. And I think that was a huge mistake. We should, as a board, the seven members of the board, voted up or down, but the top priorities were. Now, we had kind of a round robin where three or four people would say, yeah, we support that. And one of those was the request by the administration, make it clear the principals absolutely had the power to make sure there was a lesson plan available for kiddos every day. And, and, and it seemed like it just got dropped by the wayside during the negotiations, and it's, and I'm just sorry to see these really important things for our children didn't get accomplished in this contract. I'm glad we've got a deal. I think it's really important for the school system moving forward. But I think there's a lot that didn't happen here that really should have happened for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donley. Member Higgins, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. I guess I'll respond somewhat to Member Donley's comments a little bit. I've been in human resources for a long time. Not half a century, but getting close, and negotiated contracts. And I know that when you walk away from a contract negotiations, they say, both sides did a good job, and both sides walk away disappointed. This was a difficult negotiations. Our teachers deserve what, you know, what we are able to provide. We've gone five years with flat funding from the state. We don't have a defined benefit retirement system. That is something being requested, that option for employees at all. You know, we've given the flat funding over 10 years. We've got $70 million less from a, from a cost of living perspective of where the budget's been. And the money we've got from the federal is limited to be spent by September 24, and that's it. We've, we've got tough financial situation, so it was a difficult time to really negotiate a contract. I appreciate what the district did, standing at the table with that many other challenges. I appreciate that the fact that the AEA, the membership, the leadership came in there and negotiated in good faith to reach agreement. Both sides will walk away saying, I wish I got this, or I wish I got that. But at the end of the day, it's a give-or-take situation, give and take. It is a difficult environment when you're limited with the funding as severe as what the ASD is, and with such unusual impacts of pandemic, where millions of people are deciding to hang it up and retire early, filling positions, we're filling pool positions, the staffing for temporary, for the on-call, for the, for the, for the teachers. You know, we've had to reduce dramatically the requirements, the educational requirements, and then we still can't find the people. So the same thing with the other areas. We've got difficult times. I think AEA membership, the leadership understood that. There was good negotiations on both parts. I am very appreciative to both sides reaching an agreement. I know it was a long time. The, what I regret most is the stress associated with it that has been expressed by so many of the members who worked so hard during these last couple of years, particularly with these challenges, and not having a contract for this period of time. The fact that we've reached an agreement and we're able to move forward, I just, I'm very appreciative of that. I'm appreciative of the staffing that we've got, and I, and I hope we can move forward under difficult times, under the best situation we can, and my appreciation again. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Wilson?
I know you love it when people say, I agree with you. I'll go ahead and say that, but I will not reiterate everything you just. I do want to just briefly say that I recognize the last couple of years for our educators have been, have been very difficult. I live with one, so I really get to see it every day. But I really do appreciate the commitment of our teachers, your work to educate and advocate, and I'm going to emphasize the advocate because I know there's a tremendous amount of advocating being done for our students above and beyond educating them. amount of advocating being done for our students above and beyond educating them. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. I would be remiss if I didn't have people going to know, Mr. Donley, that we do are able to go into classrooms and look at lesson plans. The compromise that was made is that they all don't get turned in at a certain time and a certain week. But if we ask to see them, they should be there. And especially for if there's an underperforming person, they can be turned in. So that was worked out, and I just wanted to share that that is in the agreement. And I wouldn't want to leave without that, but I also, I'm just going to take a personal liberty to give hats off to Corey Ast for the union leadership. He and I do, don't see eye to eye lots of times. In fact, we meet over conflict. But I want to thank him for his skills on the mountain. I found myself on Alyaska on a place I shouldn't have been skiing after I followed my husband and children, and he is a mountain safety person, and he rescued me. And so I just appreciate his leadership, of course, and his expertise skills on Alyaska. But thank you, really, to all parties involved. We can move forward and do what's best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you. As an individual who was present in 2020 when the process started, I agree with Member Donley that we had a laundry list of wishes. There were seven of us. We each had numbers of things that we felt were important. We also heard things that were important from the staff. They don't call it negotiations because it's fun or it's easy. We've got, it's a give and a take. But I do think both sides came together in good faith, and I think they gave all of our wishes, which is what they were, consideration, and did what they could in terms of opportunities. Both sides worked for the best deal that they could get, not for themselves, it's for our kids. So for me, it comes back. So I will be supporting it, because I think our kids deserve it. Thank you. Member Holloman?
If I could follow up with one other item. We only discuss these priorities in executive session. I don't think we can vote in the way you described, an explicit up or down vote, that we have that discussion. We'd have to take the vote openly in this meeting, which the bargaining units would probably be okay with. Also, I want to say I'm a little disappointed in the superintendent for deliberately sabotaging Corey's chance at a second term. That just seems uncalled for. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands. We ready for the vote?
The student vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And memorandum number 92 passes, seven yays, one nay. Thank you. Moving on.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 072 and authorize the superintendent to utilize the general contractor/construction manager GC/CM project delivery method for the Aquarian Charter School renovation project.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number 72, which authorizes the superintendent to utilize the GC/CM construction delivery model, delivery method, I'm sorry, for Aquarian Charter School renovations. Is there anyone here to speak that would like to testify on the motion? Seeing none. Board discussion, any board discussion on memorandum number 72? Seeing none. I call for the vote.
Student vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And memorandum number 72 passes, seven yays, seven yays. Thank you. Item F7.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 081, the fiscal year 2022-2023 preliminary budget, and authorize an upper limit spending authority of $851,548,476.
Second. Moved in second to approve ASD memorandum number 81, which is the 2223 preliminary financial plan and budget. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on the budget, on this item? Seeing none. We will open up for board discussion.
Madam President, I saw a hand in the audience.
Did you? Oh, I did put my glasses on. Is there someone wishing?
I might.
Okay.
I'll take that.
What is your pleasure, board? I know, Member Donley, you've got some amendments. Do you want to start?
I have very few this year, Madam President. I think that should make everybody happy. And most of these you've seen before, so.
Yeah.
Currently, we're a member of the Alaska Association of School Boards, and this.
And you, oh, you're making your motion now?
I'm going to talk a little bit.
Okay, you want to talk?
Yeah.
For consistency, though, Member Donley, would you mind making your motion and then speaking to it?
If I'm allowed to do that without a second, Madam Chair, because Robert's rules doesn't require that. But if, with the understanding that I'm allowed to speak to my motion, I'd be, yes, I would do that.
Yeah, you will always be allowed to speak to your motion.
Thank you. Then I would move.
Yeah, but if you get a second.
Amendment number one, Madam Chair.
I'll second for discussion. Okay, I'm trying to find my copy of, did you put it up, Katie? Does everyone have copies of the amendments from Member Donley? Katie, we'll put it up in just a minute. We'll give her a minute here. So you have a second, Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amendment number one would delete approximately the funding that we currently expend for our membership in the Alaska Association of School Boards. And Anchorage students are simply not fairly represented within this organization. It's just unquestionable. It's, the ratio of the third next largest school districts, their students have about, you know, which is Kenai and Fairbanks, that in this organization, their students have four times the voting power per student as Anchorage does. But be that as it may, that's not nearly as shocking as the fact that the smallest Anchorage school, the smallest Alaska school districts are represented on the Alaska Association of School Boards per student with 740 times the voting power per student as Anchorage students are. That's simply not fair, and they have no interest in changing these ratios because it's so dominated by the smaller school districts. It's hugely to their advantage. They advocate multiple positions that are against the interests of Anchorage taxpayers. They've opposed the formation of local government. I strongly believe that every citizen should pay something towards the cost of public education. But here in Alaska, that's not the case. There are something like 20% of the area of Alaska where citizens pay zero towards the cost of their local schools. And I believe that's just a duty all Americans have to public education, is to pay something. I'm not talking about oppressive taxation here. I'm talking about something, because I believe their schools will be better if they have some sort of local contribution to those schools in the form of some taxation. And they oppose that. They oppose increasing the number of students to constitute a school, and currently, it's only 10. And you all heard my story the last time I attended the Alaska Association of School Boards, where I was advocating that they not continue to oppose there being any limit, like 10 minimum, which they do. They oppose 10. And just creating a school makes the costs extraordinarily high per student. And as we know, the national studies, the number-one criticism of the experts are that our education funding system is broken because there's such a great disparity between urban and rural schools in favor of the rural schools, that it's so large, the disparity, that it's unconscionable. And when I said, well, you know, you hear stories about that the rural districts hire folks because they have students, they, you know, have kids to be in the district, and that gets them over 10. And a really sweet lady in the back of the room stood up and said, that's not true, Mr. Donley, that's not true. And I said, okay. She says, we hire everybody based on how many children they have, not just our teachers, but our janitors and our maintenance workers. And that just distorts the entire system and the whole purpose of the system. It's nonsensical. And yet, the Alaska Association of School Boards doesn't even want 10 to be the minimum number for them qualifying as an independent school district or independent school. They refuse to support our efforts in asking for a district cost study be completed, which, under some estimates, is costing these students, our students, something like $32 million a year in revenue that we could be using to improve the Anchorage school district and to meet our duties here. And they also amazingly oppose parental consent for surveys of personal information of students. Thank goodness, the legislature had the good sense to make that a state law, because the Alaska Association of School Boards doesn't like it. They don't want parents to have the final say. And that's, I just totally disagree. I don't think it's in our best interest to be in this organization, and this would simply delete the funding for it in this budget. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
I'll take this.
Okay, I'll let you go before I go.
This is my first year on the board. I've attended, I think, three AASB training sessions, events, most recently, a long weekend of advocacy down in Juneau. And I think that the AA, I agree with Member Donley that the AASB represents a huge variety of districts across Alaska. Going to the delegate assembly really imparted on me the sense of how, how much of an anomaly Anchorage is. And absolutely, I agree that we have a disproportionately small representation when it comes to the number of votes that we have when we agree at that delegate assembly on the priorities of AASB. And I think that's something that's unfortunate. But I also see the value of the organization in onboarding and supporting members, in helping them understand the lay of the land when it comes to how to effectively advocate our legislators. And I think that the net value for Anchorage is still a positive. So I see a lot of what you're saying here, but I have personally benefited in my role as a board member from the AASB organization, and so I will oppose this. But I thank you for bringing up some really important points.
Any other comments? Member Donley? And then, and then Member Higgins. First, I mean, Holloman, I did it again.
We got to get some names.
I got to get, I got to do something. Yeah. All right, Member Holloman, and then we'll go to Higgins.
To a fair degree, I think the points, Member Donley, makes make sense. There are positions we disagree with. They do have fundamentally different interests, and it is tilted. The power in the organization is tilted towards a collection of small rural districts. If it was proportional, it would simply be Anchorage. We'd be the majority. I suspect everybody else would drop out. Despite the differences, there are a lot of positives that they do, and a key one, I think, is communication between rural Alaska and urban Alaska, which is in bad shape. There's not a lot of communication in other ways. I think we have the opportunity, by being in the organization, to have a voice there. We don't always win. That's frustrating. But it is the case, I think, that we help those districts. I think they help us. I still support us being members and continuing the discussion with them outside of meeting each other in Juneau or other places accidentally. I think we need that time to have the discussion with them. So I will not support the amendment.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
Thank you. I'm not going to support this request as well. I will simply say, you know, I will not always agree with most organizations on every issue, and I clearly, I don't agree with everything with the Alaska School Board Association of School Boards. But as a member with the National School Board Association, they advocate for a role for the board to play that I think is important, and they do a good job of it. The role of the school boards from the National School Board Associations, or the Alaska Association of School Boards, is that we are the voice of the public, we provide directions, and we hold accountability. That is not the direction of things such as Council of Great City Schools. I think this organization, providing that level of training and support and advocating for what roles the boards should be playing, we are responsible for the funnel for the budget, we are responsible for curriculum, we heard these items recently in presentations to the board, I think is very important. We're moving into a direction, this current board, which was not here a short time ago, and that is, we find, we're finding our voice. And I think Alaska Association of School Boards is an advocate for that. I know there are controversial issues that are out there that AASB and NSB, the National School Board Association, has taken that some people are going to latch onto locally or nationally. But I find them to be a very valuable supporter of schools in Alaska, and the support we got recently when we were in Juneau, and the presentations they provided and the training, I thought was excellent. And so I appreciate what AASB does, and I will not support this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. I will not support, although I have a, I think I need to declare a conflict. I currently serve on the Board of Directors for the AASB, and I also hold the position of treasurer. So I will abstain from voting. But at the same time, I, had I voted, if I were to vote, it would not be in favor of the amendment. So I will abstain.
Madam President, I'll also declare the same conflict, as I'm currently a board member of the AASB also.
So we need, so we have, yeah, we, so we do have two board members sitting here in the boardroom who are on the board of AASB.
I will leave it to the individual members to make that decision, but I don't see any conflict there. I mean, you're doing your duty as a board member. We appreciate your service on that board. So I, for one, don't, you know, I don't see any problem with it, but I also respect your individual decision on that.
Okay, so we have declared potential conflict. What is the pleasure of the board? Member Higgins?
I'm going to join Member Donley on this one. You do not have any financial conflicts of interest. The fact that you're serving on that to provide directions, you could easily vote either way. You're doing, you're just more knowledgeable of it. I don't think the fact that we have kids in school, grandkids, that we have, we serve on different committees trying to get things done, should be a basis. on different committees trying to get things done should be a basis where we are excluding members from voting. I, I want their voice on these types of issues. And the fact that you're more knowledgeable about it to some degree because your involvement makes your voice even more important. So I would support not declaring this as a conflict of interest. I don't think there's any personal benefit you have. And so I don't see that as a conflict at all.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Anybody else want to speak on the conflict part? All right, so the motion before us right now is memorandum number 81. I'm sorry, Ms. Donnelly's amendment. Is it up? Okay, yes. So we can vote.
The student vote? Member Wilson?
No.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Lessons? Member Higgins?
No.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Abstaining.
And President Bellamy?
So that passes one, one yay. Four, I'm, I'm sorry. It fails. I'm sorry, it fails. With two abstentions, four nays and one yay. All right. Thank you.
Madam President, would you like me to proceed?
Continue, yes, please.
First of all, I want to really thank the board for its leeway in allowing me to move and then speak to things. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. I would move amendment number two. Is it okay if I speak to it?
We're waiting for a second. There is no second.
Well, if there's no second, then I would just withdraw my motion and then just speak.
If you would like to do that, Member Donnelly, that would be fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would you verbally withdraw your?
Yeah, we already resolved under Robert's rules that a member's allowed to speak and then to make a motion, so.
Did you withdraw your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna speak at this time. One of the groups that the school district belongs, the Anchorage School District belongs to is the Coalition for Education Equity. And the last I identified the budget, the cost of that was about $32,000 a year. And pretty much everything, it applies to the conflicts of interest with the Alaska Association of School Boards. And this also applies to the Coalition for Education Equity. The last I checked, and historically, this has just been the fact, is the Anchorage School District is the only large school district that's a member of this organization. The other members are the Alaska Gateway School District. Well, let's just say they're pretty much 12 or 14 of the smallest school districts in the state. So Fairbanks is not a member, Kenai's not a member, Matsu's not a member, Juneau's not a member. None of the other urban areas are members of this. And we by far pay the most dues per member of any of the other members for this organization. So for those reasons, I would now move, and so I believe that we should delete the funding for the cost of this membership and I would so move by amendment number two.
There is no second. Do you have another one, Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. It's, it's been a tough year. We've, we've been strained, but I always believe, you know, it's just like the superintendent says, if you set the goals high, you can work towards them. And so there is a category of funding that's determined by the Alaska Department of Education. There's two functions, State Function 510 and State Function 550 that are within the budget documents at pages 63 and 64. And those are administrative services that, that do not, are not classroom related. They're segregated out from the classroom supports. These are pure administrative costs. And I believe that we should make an effort to, you know, additionally reduce the costs that appear in these budget, this budget, on those pure administrative, non-classroom-related administrative costs. And, and one way to do that would be something that I've imposed in past years to have a, just a 2% reduction in these administrative cost functions in these particular categories. And I would move amendment number three to do that at this time.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to reduce.
I could speak to the amendment if you wish and explain it. Thank you.
Because amendment number two did not receive a second, I remember Donnelly, you're, we're calling this number three?
This is number three.
Yeah, it's labeled number three.
Number two, yeah. Okay. Well, in the, in our packet, we have it as number three.
Correct.
Okay. For the voting, okay, I see what you're saying.
Is it okay if I speak to it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. This would be a $300,000 reduction in the State Function Code lines of 510 and 550 within our budget proposal that's before us now. That's, that's something less than, it's about 2%. And, you know, I'm offering this with a sincere recognition of the stress that's occurred for the last year with COVID and, and, and the challenges we faced. But I do think that we're looking down a cataclysmic event in two years when the COVID money is gone and the state money to absorb the reductions, pupil reductions that we've experienced, it runs out. We're looking at a over $60 million gap to fill. And I would like to get a little bit of a jumpstart on that gap this year. It's going to be tough. We're looking at some amazingly difficult decisions over the next couple of years if some, you know, man, money doesn't fall from the skies here real soon. And so this would just be a little tiny step in, I think, starting to address that, those, that huge gap projection we're looking at out next year and the year after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Any board comments? Member Jacobs? And then we'll go to Member Holloman.
Thank you, Madam President. So I guess first, a question for the maker. In, I'm curious in the preparation for today's meeting and working with the administration, what positions have we identified, maybe not the specific job code, but what types of positions would be eliminated by this reduction? And how would that impact indirectly students and staff? Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes.
My intent is to leave full discretion to the administration to figure out a way to absorb this reduction. The budget book, this is just the bottom line number that's reflected in the budget book for those two specific codes. And I want to give them the flexibility because I know it's, you know, it's, with what our staff is facing, I fully acknowledge it's really tough.
Do you have a follow-up?
Sure, yeah, I appreciate the motion and I, I share interest in making resources be funneled to our classrooms whenever and wherever possible. I am equally unsettled by what, not just what this budget may look like, but future years, based on the impending fiscal cliff we've been expressing to stakeholders, both here in Juneau. But without more specific information, I'm struggling as to what this might look like. We saw administration save roughly a million dollars with the installation of the PA Systems at Weston Roaming recently. Administration was responsible in securing millions in funding for COVID testing and things of that nature. I'm concerned that we're going to be losing more than we're gaining with that $300,000 without more specifics. And if we don't have any specific proposal as to what that might look like, I don't know how we can genuinely consider this at this time. I, my understanding is this motion may have been made before in years past of specific, Madam President, I guess I'm curious about learning if there have been specific job types that have been on the chopping block before, as this motion has been considered?
That would be a question for the superintendent or staff. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the President to Member Jacobs. Actually, those functions include more than just people, so we would take the privilege if this passed to make a plan for that. It is everything from IT contracts to people to payroll and the like.
One last follow-up. So to be clear, we, the board won't have any knowledge as to what specific departments within the district will be impacted.
Through the President to Member Jacobs, we would like, share that once we figured it out, but right now, we don't have that, yeah. Who did I say was next? Member Holloman.
I'm, I'm opposed to the general reduction in that I think this board is close enough to the ground that we would need to see things that we wanted to see eliminated, that we're not working with a budget of the size or a situation where we simply put money in a container and go spend this much. If, if we look at those areas that are outside of instruction, like the business office or like payroll or other areas, and see excess, I, I think that would challenge us to really hold the superintendent accountable. We, I don't know that we've ever voted to say it, but it's just a given that instruction is where we want every dollar we can put. And all the things that go into these other areas are simply essentials that have to be done in order to keep things running. And we don't want to spend any more on IT than we have to. We don't want to spend any more on transportation than we have to. And my experience with the district is that, on a given moment, you may be able to find some excess that ebbs and flows. It's a large organization. People make mistakes, people, it takes a while to change things. But there are not people sitting at desks with nothing to do. There are not people sitting in places that have a lot of spare time. And I've seen the administration shrink. I've seen the support staff shrink over decades. Other than times when we have cut specific programs, I couldn't tell you, I don't think specific duties went away. So we're still doing a lot more per person than we did a long time ago. At times, we have cut programs. And I think if we were going to make a cut of that size, it would be incumbent on the district, I mean, on the board to say, this is what we think is in excess. And we're, we're willing to cut that unless the administration can justify the need for, for that particular thing. I, I can see this if we think the administration members or directors are overpaid. I don't think we've looked at it close enough to be able to say something like that. I, I don't support this as a way to reduce the budget effectively.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Member Higgins, did you have comments?
Yes, thank you. You know, I'm, I'm going to be inclined to go ahead and support this for a couple of reasons. One is I'm convinced that there were opportunities here. But more importantly, the board has the ability to come back and with unrestricted reserves, make a change as if it's supported by the administration that there's a need to do that and other options aren't available. Sometimes we're setting goals. And clearly, I agree with Mr. Holloman. Every job is to put every penny we can to into the classroom. If there are issues here, and, and, you know, that are identified, I've looked at the changes in admin costs based on my review, and there's changes that are going up. And there's, you know, prior to time I was on the school board, nine years in a row, we, we spent the time talking about the budget and we identified areas and we actually reduced administration nine years in a row. Now, at this particular point, we haven't really devoted that time to it, but I still think we need a clear goal. And a goal is putting more into classrooms. And I think this is a modest and reasonable goal. And I think there are ways for the administration to achieve this and, and a variety of ways. And so I'm going to support it.
Yes, Member Lessons?
Yeah, I spent a good portion of this afternoon before coming to the board meeting at the YMCA with my budget book and Appendix G while my kids and some other kids played in the pool, trying to keep it dry. And I say that because Appendix G itemizes all of the schools that show where teacher reductions are happening. It's almost all of them. And yes, it's due to smaller enrollment, which is Jim's head's nodding. But, but I do, but I was also thinking about a community council meeting I was at last night, and community council members, they also know that this fiscal cliff is coming. And, you know, when I look at the, in particular, the district administration support services, and I look at the historical trajectory from 2019, that particular state function has gotten bigger. And this doesn't seem like a very large slice of that pie. And so I think it is a baby step towards the fiscal cliff. So I'm going to support it.
I kind of want to hear from the administration. Thank you, Member Lessons. Dr. Bishop or whoever you'd like.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, this, we highlighted this for you in our budget presentation whereby the unfilled positions or changes used to all be collected and put in that one fund. And then what we started to do is put them in the funds that the positions that weren't filled in. So we purposely showed you that and we purposely told you why that was increasing. You want to talk about that, Jim, so that you would have better transparency?
Sir, I'd love to. We, we talked about this at the, the board meeting, the finance meeting. I think I also put it in Board Connect. So the district's negative attrition account is about $24, $25 million a year. And we had that all in one state function, and that was the district admin support. So what we did was go back to FY '19, and it's been that way for, for many years. So Andy and I decided that we really wanted to take those attrition accounts and spread it out on all of the state functions because it's more transparent. It's not that district admin support went up a lot in one year, it's that we took this negative attrition account and spread it across all the state functions. So for district admin support, if you look at...
And might I add that prior to 2016 in our budget process review, when Jim was hired, we didn't, the district didn't even account for that and disclose that. So we started in 2016, sharing it and keeping it in this budget brief so that you could find it very easily. And then this year, we took the next step to be highly transparent and demonstrate where that attrition was happening.
So when you look at the attrition account, you would have had $24 million minus in district admin support services, where now you have a million and a half. So that other almost $23 million was spread to the other state functions. So it really isn't this huge growth over time. It's taking this negative number that helps balance out the budget. And to try to explain why we, why we do an attrition account, we look at the positions over time, the percentages that are, that we couldn't fill, vacancies, leave, things like that. And if you don't put that negative number and you just budget all of your money, then in reality, you would be having $24 million that you couldn't use as a resource to put more educators in classrooms and other places across the district because you budgeted for X number of positions, but they didn't all get filled. So this negative, what it allows you to do when you, when you get accurate on an attrition account, it creates that negative, which actually frees up $24 million. account, it creates that negative, which actually frees up $24 million. So you can now infuse that into other positions across the district.
And Madam President, prior to this time, you would end your fiscal year and then have a whole bunch of money that you couldn't keep at the time when it was over 10%. You couldn't keep that in your fund balance. And so we have begun to use it through our budget, correct?
It certainly avoids that end of year mass spending spree because now we've faked on $20 million. What this does is level everything out over the course of the year so you can put more resources in the most important place across the district. And, and this is the best practice. This is the way we should be doing the budget. And I don't know...
I just wanted to share that. If you look at that, we need to be very transparent about why that is that way. It's a mathematical choice. But the district did increase in positions in areas for which the prior board during my tenure here asked to increase, and that was in communications as well as human resources. There were deliberate asks to get better in those areas. Over time, since 2016, we have added positions to those two administrative areas.
And I can go through this again. At the Finance Committee meeting, I've done state function charts. I think everyone knows that's where HR, payroll, IT, 57% of all district admin support is IT, either contracts for everything from Business Plus, which is our ERP, through hardware, servers, switches, routers, things I don't even know what they are, but Mike talks about them all the time. That's 57% of all the district admin support. So there's a lot of things involved in that other than negative attrition account.
Hence, we can go back, look at it if this passes to find where that would be best met.
I specifically recalled the board asking for changes in, just as the superintendent just shared. So now we're going to almost punish what we asked them to do. I mean, the consequences on, she did what the board asked her to do. Now we're going to take an action that is going to disrupt what we asked to be done. So, and if that is the will of the board, that's fine. But I will not be voting, supporting the motion. Member Wilson?
I'm obviously fully aware that that fiscal cliff is in our future. I'm also not comfortable asking for a reduction before we know what we're asking to be reduced. So I, as Member Jacob stated, until I understand how it's going to affect our students and our staff, I can't support a motion that, to me, randomly asks for a 2% reduction without the details of how that affects our students and our staff. There was one thing that Member, are you Holloman or Donley? I'm just joking. Member Holloman stated, sorry, couldn't resist, that Member Holloman stated that, I know that I've heard from the community, some community members that there's a perception that folks in the administration are overpaid. My experience in speaking with people is oftentimes you're asked to step into that administrative role because your leadership skills have shown, have proven to show that you would be a great person in that role. But sometimes that comes at a financial cost. So it's not that they are necessarily coming in to make more money. Sometimes they're barely breaking even, and sometimes they're, they're taking a bit of a decrease in pay. So I cannot, like I said, I can't support this motion at this time.
Other comment? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to join Member Wilson in saying that I can't support the amendment at this time. Asking for staff to cut without identifying direction, to me, walks right up to that line of fiscal irresponsibility that I'm just not comfortable with personally. When I was working to identify with the administration how we could, as a district, provide more mental health supports to our students, I asked for a list of areas that could be cut. And I was told educators, programs, and the list was given to me. I would assume that we could get something similar for this proposal and review it later as part of a budget revision. But at this point, I don't think that I have enough information to make a decision. So absent the motion being withdrawn and referred to finance for further action, I'll have to vote no today, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Higgins, I see your hands up.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one thing. A budget is a working document. It's going to be changed over time. If there's a need for additional funding, if the administration can't do something, they can come back and justify to the board, make changes to it. I think we're sending a message, and that's what I want to do, is that we're looking to try and to look at areas with least impact, and that's what we want the administration to do. We're not trying to select what the administration, and they have more knowledge than we do, of the best place that they have to cut to do that. And if, from their standpoint, they feel like there's a, it's not possible to do it, and they can explain that to us, the board can add that back in during the year. There's always budget changes. But what we're doing is sending a message that we are looking to try to get cuts outside, and we're asking the administration to be the one to take the lead and identify where that's at. It's the old joke in the Washington, in the, in public sector, that if you got to cut the budget more, then the first dollar they have to cut is sell the Washington Monument. I'm, I am totally confident that this is something that's achievable without selling the Washington Monument. And, and to accomplish that, it may well be that needs are going to change during the year. They're going to come back and ask for more than the 300,000. I don't know. But I think all that being asked here is to send that message. If people are not comfortable with it, I respect that. But I just don't want anyone to think that this is a final financial document. They make changes during the year all the time, but we're asking them to look to find the best place to cut this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board before we vote? Not seeing any. Let's vote. The student vote? No. And Member Holloman?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
No.
President Bellamy?
No.
Three ayes, four nays.
Madam President?
Yes, you have one more?
Yeah, a few years ago, the board adopted something called the middle school model. That added a planning period, and the superintendent can correct me if I get any of this wrong, but to our middle schools, our day. And it had the effect of us needing to hire additional instructors for those middle schools to keep the, the ratio of students and teachers equal because it, the teachers were teaching one period less. And at the time, I opposed that just for basically budget reasons. And it had a $2.4 million impact on our budget. And if we were to go back to the way it was a few years ago, it would be a reduction of 18 middle school teachers, but we would incur, we would get a savings of $2.4 million. And so that is what Amendment Number Four does, and I would move it at this time.
So your motion is to, would you just state your motion? Discontinue the middle school model? Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Not here in a second. Your motion dies.
Thank the board for their leeway.
Thank you, Member Donley. So that completes Member Donley's amendments. We will now move to Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend the fiscal year 2022, 2023 preliminary budget as proposed in ASD Memorandum 81 by allocating the estimated $5 million in remaining SRT2 grant fund balance for the purpose of student mental health supports and related programming.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to allocate the estimated $5 million in remaining SRT2 funds. Member Jacobs, will you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity. As we, first, just a couple of operational notes. The funds that are being proposed to be reallocated currently exist in the proposed budget, so this is not an increase. This is funds that we anticipate being rolled over to the next fiscal year that will go unspent this year. In terms of priority, we do have a guardrail that speaks to mental health supports in schools. As I know each of our board members here knows, youth in Alaska are disproportionately affected by mental and behavioral health challenges. I see it myself as a licensed therapeutic foster parent. Well before the COVID-19 pandemic, youth were negatively impacted each and every day at just about each and every of our campuses by mental health challenges. And I know the administration is currently working hard to re-envision how we're delivering those supports for students who need them in the schools. I am aiming to ensure that resources, as we re-envision, will not be an issue. And that, to that end, I'm asking for these funds to be allocated for that purpose for our new Director of Mental Health to utilize as they see fit. This is intended to be an upper limit, and the funds can be relocated prior to the expiration date, which they must be used by in 2023, should the department not require those funds. So we'd ask the board's support in supporting the staff and our students in an area that's very of much need. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. I'd like to hear from the administration. Dr. Bishop?
Yes, I was just reading it again. SRT2 is a little bit different than SRT3. SRT3 was wide open. Jim, are there any precautionary measures for SRT2?
Yeah, that was my question. Were there restrictions on SRT2 funds that we, that would prevent us from using those funds for? Okay.
With title, anisa planting. We're all good.
Okay.
There are, there are strings. I don't want anyone to think it's, it's easy. Procurement has to be done in a specific way with competitive procurements and contracts. I mean, there are rules to the money, but mental health in general is not, is not a banned use. Just how we can use the money to get what we're trying to do will have some strings attached with, as it is with SRT3.
Okay. Member Lessons?
This is a question. I have also been thinking about those SRT2 funds, and we had a bit of a dialogue about PTR reduction. But I think one question that I have is for that four and a half or $5 million, what number of PTR could we lower K through three class sizes by? Because I, right now, K is at 21, first grade is at 22, second is at 24, and third grade is at 25. Could we lower each of those by two, three, two and a half to three?
No. If you were to just lower K3 down to 20, and kindergarten's at 21, so that only drops by one, but to lower all of K3 down to 20, it's 10.3 million.
Yeah, my question is, what if we didn't lower them all down to 20? So a little, you know, if we lowered each of those grades by two or three? So it would still be a stair step up? So, you know, first grade would maybe go down to two, to 20, and second grade could go down to 22, and third grade could go to 23.
Fortunately, Andy has his computer. He's at home because he can't be here. And he's on Zoom, and we will give him a moment to figure this out as, as I'm going to tell a joke or something. As soon as Andy's ready, he'll have the answer.
So just to clarify, though, so is your question related to the motion? Is the motion that's on before us?
My question is related to the motion because I am interested in the similar pot of money, the SRT2 funds that were unspent from when, when they were allocated in Memorandum 002 in 2020 and Memorandum 110.
So you're trying to determine if you're going to...
I'm trying to understand my ability to support the motion on the floor by thinking about what I understand are the board's goals for improved reading proficiency and the acute level of need that I see in our schools for reduced class sizes.
Okay, other questions while, Andy, Andy, you ready?
I am ready. Thank you. So if we were to change the PTR by about one and a half in grades K through three, that would add back 40, almost 43 teachers at a cost of just under $5 million.
Thank you. So, so, oh, yes, Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. My question has to do with if we, what happens to the next fiscal year budget if we do this? The projections. I mean, my understanding, current projection for the fiscal year following the one we're dealing with tonight is approximately $40 million gap. If we use these SRT funds in this fiscal year, is that gap going to increase?
I understand that, that we're talking about next school year's budget, and these funds have to be spent by September 30, 2023, from, from SERSA or SRT2. The ARP money or SRT3 money is September 30, 2024.
So none of these funds that this amendment proposes to utilize would otherwise be used in the fiscal year following the one...
We will have to spend it by the end of summer school in the summer of 2023.
2023.
So it won't affect the FY24 fiscal cliff drop off.
Matt, I would say until, unless you didn't push, you push these next year, and then you take $5 million, push them. But if you're seriously talking about additional positions, you can't do that. You know, I mean, I'm happy to spend $5 million, but we just had a discussion about 300,000 without a plan, and now we're talking about $5 million without a plan.
So to clarify, the, the pot of money that we're talking about for this motion is already in the current budget.
It was projected to be used through the end of this fiscal year, and it wasn't for a number of reasons. A lot of the health teachers ended up not being health teachers last year. There were other vacant positions. There were, when we actually applied it to teacher salaries, there was a lot more junior teachers instead of senior teachers. So there's a lot of different things that caused this original budget for SRT2 to have savings. Part of that is, is just the reality that we didn't know we were going to have such a hard time hiring people. And, and I think all of us have seen that the whole year.
Okay.
So it's essentially fund balance this year.
Emily, did you have a, did I see your hand up? I mean, Ellie, I'm sorry. Ms. Shaw?
Can I ask, okay, this might sound silly. What is the SRT2 grant fund and like what is like involved with it? So it's like if it's getting, like the remaining is getting put to mental health, is it taking away from anything?
And that was what I was trying to clarify just now, is that the money's already in the budget. It's a savings that's up, that is already in the budget. So SRT is the funds that we received. SRT stands for, what does SRT stand for again? Emergency, what?
Elementary, secondary.
Elementary, secondary.
Emergency relief fund.
From the, these were federal funds. These were funds from, for, when we were dealing, from COVID, the COVID response.
Just be for elementary schools?
No, no, no. Elementary and secondary.
Okay, okay.
Yes. Member Wilson? Member Wilson?
So I, I do actually want to speak in support of this motion. We've heard testimony from parents about the mental health issues that their students have been dealing with due to the last couple of years of COVID. I've heard from many, many teachers about the behavioral issues and the struggles that their students have from, pretty much from across the board, from most educators that I've spoken with, and to provide some additional support to help them transition back to ideally a more, more positive mental health state. I, I just can't find a negative with that. So I will support this motion.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Any other comments before we vote? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to address the timely and important question by Member Lessons earlier, that I appreciate the focus on maintaining as low of people teacher ratios as we can. I think the important distinction here, as we've discussed, is the limit on the timing of when we can spend these funds. And then, in addition, I think it's also important to recognize that these funds will be able to impact all, every student, potentially based on how programming is implemented. And while there may not be a concrete plan by the administration at this point, as much as I've pushed for there to be, as they would attest to, I'm confident that they're working to reimagine quickly, and that I'm confident at least some of these resources will be of use. So, again, with her support, I thank everyone for the questions and consideration.
Let me go to Member Higgins, and then I'll come back, because you had one time to speak. And then Holloman, okay?
Thank you. One of the discussions in Juneau this past weekend had to do with legislation trying to develop a, a mental health plan, no funding, of course, from the legislature, but, but deal with the mental health issues that are out there significantly. My concern is not the idea that we don't need to put money into it. My issue is trying to develop something to be able to spend it for one year, not having succession funding after that. How long will it take to develop some plan of action? How can we use that money effectively in a short period of time? And if we don't have ongoing funding for it, what will be the, how beneficial will this money be used? That's the only issue that I have. The need for it, I think, is clearly established, and I think the fact that all schools in the country, within this state right now, with different legislatures, are all kind of expressing the same concerns for their students right now for the impact that we've been under the last few years. But, but how we can, how can we use this money on a one-time basis if we don't have continued funding and it takes so long to even start up the program or even design it? That's my, that's my concern, and I'd like to hear from the administration on that.
Sure, Dr. Bishop? Thank you. That's a great question, Member Higgins. And I just want to bring it back to the reason that we have a fund balance, is that this was towards supports for students this school year for health, additional services. And the reason that we have it is primarily because we couldn't hire the people in the positions due to the workforce. And so, I, I would say that we're building partnerships with outside organizations that were looking for help to help support. But even prior to this time, we received a grant from the city with their SR funds through a local provider and to increase positions, mental health from four to 16. And we carry about three open positions in that grant, simply because of the workforce. And so, our sharing in the past hasn't been about not having the capacity or the ability to create a plan. We're just saying that a plan to increase mental health and supports is going to take time to scale. It, it's difficult to scale. Again, the reason that, primarily, the reason that we have these funds is for the same thing of the attrition account that we shared before. The workforce that's available to us is strained right now. And so, we can put it towards it, and then we might be looking at, you know, a later time of finding. And it's not to mention that all would go towards that. There's other services that we could utilize, and I, I have confidence in Mark Stock and Jenny Knutson and Kate McGlellan to come up and work through that plan, but it would just take time to work with the providers as well as our own counselors. So, I mean, we just need to be realistic about hiring people. To your point, Mr. Higgins, you work in the healthcare field, so you understand this specific thing.
Member Holloman? Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
I'm going to find it painful to not vote in support of additional mental health resources for students, but this is dedication of one-time money, or, I mean, we, we know that these emergency funds are going to come to an end. And if we establish a department, I think we'll see value from it. I think there's a need there. I think over the past year and a half, it's been recognized more than ever that schools provide mental health benefits to kids that, that were just kind of taken for granted before. I'm going to say that we saw a similar thing happen with the funds that came about during the, the economic issues of 2009, the stimulus money, where we took stimulus money and created some programs that definitely worked, definitely had benefit to students. And when the stimulus money went away, the programs went away, because then it became balanced against classroom teachers once again, which is kind of the gold standard of, of any, any position that's not directly instructional or not required, like you've got to have a bus driver, you've got to staff your cafeteria. But when you're looking at tutors, or, or mental health, or counseling, or other things like that, you balance against, that comes out of classroom teachers. So to create a program that's going to face that test in a few years, without any assurance right now that we're going to see the kind of funding that would cover it, what I would expect is that the superintendent would come to us if they saw a critical need, to say we need more mental health resources here and here, because it's critical to the point it's impacting kids in their classroom work. And at that point, we would have to look at shifting resources from somewhere in to fill that. But I, I worry greatly about creating a program in the millions of dollars a year that's going to face that test. And unfortunately, it'll be doing good. It will be helping students. I, I would want us to have a long-term plan for funding it before we took that step. Thank you.
Other comments? Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. To, to address the comments made by Vice President Holloman, I, I share the concern as to long-term funding, not just for mental health supports, but for the significant drop that we're allocating towards PTR next year, going from roughly 56 million to 8 million. There's a significant drop-off in a number of areas. And that doesn't change the need, and doesn't change what staff are asking for right now, which is supports for youth that don't necessarily include adding a teacher to a classroom, but still would benefit the work they're doing. I wanted to also be clear that the administration has indicated that a re-envisioning is coming, whether or not this amendment passes. And so, in my conversations, the administration has been equally clear that it is within the realm of possibility that some campuses may face unequal access to mental health professionals like counselors or other supports that they enjoy right now, based on need. And my goal with this amendment is to ensure that financial resources aren't an impediment to ensuring that staff have the support they need. And like every year, we'll address it here in about a year's time with the next budget, and I would still encourage support for this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Miss Shaw?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I am in favor of the amendment. I know it doesn't really matter for like voting count, but just from a student in one of the high schools' point of view, right now, the counselors, you know, our counselors in our schools, there's maybe seven, six or seven of them, to cover over 1,000 students. Like, they can't, there's no physical way you can expect them to take care or be there for someone's mental health, to take care of their classes, to help, you know, seniors and juniors figure out college situations, you know? Should I apply there? Like, what does my resume look like? Especially with COVID, it's hard to expect counselors to take on so much for so many different students. You know, it's like, they can only do so much. And so, like, with this, I would say, I'm not being biased, because I am in high school, but like, start off strong with high school, because we are the ones who are, you know, we're going, having to take this next step into our lives. And I just feel like mental health is a bigger impact on that age level of high school students. So, I, I just think mental health supporters would help high schoolers a lot, you know, just someone else to go to that's not your counselor, who you maybe not have a deeper connection with, because it is hard for counselors to make deeper connections when they are in charge of hundreds of students at a time of different age levels and different situations. So I do think mental health counselors, supporters, social workers would be very beneficial for at least high school students, and it doesn't hurt for middle school or in elementary to let them know that they have someone there who they can talk to, do things about, if they're not sure, you know, if it is a question for their counselor, or something they don't necessarily want to talk to their parents about.
Thank you, Miss Shaw. Miss Lessons, you have your hand up?
I do. I'd like to amend the amendment. Shall I read it first? So I move to amend the amendment, so that we'll read. I move to amend the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 preliminary budget as proposed in ASD memorandum 81 by reallocating the unused SR1 and 2 funds from memos 002 and 110 to PTR reduction for FY23 for grades K through three at schools that remain below or far below benchmark in reading or math as of spring 2022. And I'll be happy to ship that.
Madam President, I, can I, I guess I would ask for the right to have a ruling as to whether or not that's in order, or changing the intent of the main motion, but can I see it written first?
Let me see, I have. So the amendment, as it's, as the current, the amendment, the motion before us is to amend the fiscal year 2022-23 preliminary budget as proposed in ASD memorandum number 81 by allocating the estimated five million in remaining SR2 grant fund balance for the purpose of student mental health supports and related programming. That is the motion before us. The amendment just submitted reads, I move, the first part of it is the same. I move to amend the fiscal year 22-23 preliminary budget as proposed in memorandum 81 by, here's where it changes, reallocating the unused SR1 and, and 2 funds from memos 002 and number 110 to PTR reduction for fiscal year 23 for grades K3 at schools that remain below or far below benchmark. It essentially changes the motion.
Yeah, point of order.
It essentially changes.
Madam President, that isn't an amendment, that's entirely a motion. We must dispense with this.
This would be a whole new motion. This is not amending, this is not an appropriate amendment for the motion before us. But I will leave it up to the board. You, you can see both. Katie, can you put both up? This essentially changes from mental health support to?
You can amend more than once, but you can substitute by an amendment.
Are you, this would have to be a substitute motion?
I guess I would, I would ask for a substitute.
But, wait, first of all. So you want to substitute the motion before us? Yes, please.
I would, may I second for the purposes of discussion, to make sure that there's a second to it? So that's not an issue?
Okay, thank you. She needs a minute to? It goes back, it goes back. If the substitute motion fails, it goes back to the original. If it passes, right, it's a motion. And we have a second to substitute the, the current. Okay, we have before us a substitute motion. I'm sorry, a substitute amendment. And you can see it before you. It changes, it's, it, but it asks, well, it's, proposes, and I'm going to let you speak to it, Member Lessons, but it proposes to reallocate the unused SR1 and 2 funds from memos 002 and 110 to PTR reductions for fiscal year 23, 22, 23, or, is it 22, 23? 23?
Yeah.
Okay, for grades K3 at schools that remain below or far below benchmark in reading or math as of spring 2022. Procedurally, if this, we have, Member Lessons will speak, and then I'll talk about the procedure. Go on.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to my motion. So, we have adopted board goals involving some aggressive growth in both reading and math. We regularly review progress monitoring, and in our most recent K2 reading report, only 13 schools were on target for growth, with one additional school near target. Eight of the far below benchmark schools had winter proficiency rates in the teens, and other 13 schools had proficiency rates less than or equal to 25%. Our ELL, our sped and economically disadvantaged students exhibited the lowest rates of being at benchmark. And crucially, our first graders, who started kindergarten online and missed some core foundational experiences, are experiencing the slowest rates of catch-up growth. In math, we're seeing some similar trends. Nationally, I Nationally, a new study by a group Amplify has looked at data from more than 400,000 students K through 5. And more than 1 in 3 children in grades K through 3, they say, have little chance of reading on grade level by the end of this school year without major and systemic interventions. The earliest grades have the fewest students prepared. We have had information in ASD for years, going back to at least the Picasa Autumn Study, showing that we need to have significantly lower class sizes. I don't think that $5 million in one year is actually going to get us to an adequate level of class sizes. But I think that it's a hail mary opportunity to show the legislature what we might be able to do if we had a little bit more funding. By focusing on our PTR reduction at the schools with the most acute levels of need, I think we're responding to community members' concerns about how we use our SR funds, specifically with respect to student learning loss, the needs of underserved students. Those were two core issues that community members told us they wanted to see our SR funds used for. I appreciate the mental health focus that Member Jacobs brought forward. I'm deeply concerned about the long-term trajectory for that without adequate funding from the state. But I think that this year, with these previously allocated but unutilized funds, it provides us an opportunity to do something for the students who need it most. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop. Madam President, Jim Anderson, pick up a technical piece if you want to share that.
Yes, thanks, Dr. Bishop. So SR1 won't exist because it has to be spent out by 30 September. In fact, it'll be spent out in weeks. We're backcharging stuff to it to close it out. It was the most, we tried to close that out. And that's partly how we ended up with the fund allowance for SR2 as well. There's a lot of things that play into doing that. So it really would just be SR2.
Thank you for that. And I would move to amend my amendment by striking.
What is the amount of SR2?
We're projecting somewhere between 4.5 and 5.3 million. So we think it'll be around 5 million. We're still waiting on a lot of invoices to come in on IT equipment. So we left a little bit of bumper. We'd like to keep it no higher than 5 million just because we don't have invoices. That's what we think it'll be.
Point of clarification, so would that then take out memo 2 as well?
That is correct. Memo 002 is an SR1.
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes.
Are we, my understanding is that this is already an amendment to an amendment via substitution. Are we amending, are we trying to amend an amendment of an amendment? So are we, this is a, in essence, we're treating this as a friendly amendment? Just a housekeeping correction?
Yes, based on the information.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Based on the information from. The questions, comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think the mover of amendment via substitution, and I agree on, as a matter of fact, I think the rationale is almost the same and the concerns are the same. We, by our own projections, are planning on investing in this next budget in positions that likely won't be funded in future years. Those concerns aren't changing or addressed by this amendment via substitution. So to me, that's a moot point. I also think that the original amendment intends to address a need with youth who are underserved as well and a need that's gone unaddressed. Two out of three Alaskan adults have an adverse childhood experience score, which is an individual who's experienced some form of abuse or neglect in their life of one or more. Alaska ranks near the bottom annually in adolescent mental health. We're spending, as I believe it to be the case, 56 million in retaining PTR in this proposed budget. We're putting serious resources. I don't see that level of commitment to this guardrail. And the safeguard that the original amendment intends to put in place would allow the re-envisioned mental health services that the administration's working to configure the room to grow and support our students now as it takes effect. So I'm going to not support at this time due to what I see as a clear ask from our community and staff that I've spoken with as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
I don't disagree with the fact that our kids could benefit from lower class sizes. I don't disagree with the fact that our students, our younger students, need those additional supports. However, the SR2 funds is an opportu, this is an opportunity to support our guardrail regarding mental health. It's an opportunity to spread that to as many students within our district as we can. Whereas the current substitute amendment, as it states, would only temporarily help to focus on a small group of students. So I still really want to take this opportunity with that additional money that we have. Again, I understand this is one-time money to try to help as many of our students recoup from COVID and the mental health issues that it has enhanced for many of them. That it hasn't, hasn't brought them out. I mean, a lot of our students, as Member Jacob said, deal with mental health issues. But it has been enhanced by COVID. We've heard that from the community. We've heard that from the staff. I hear it every day from teachers. They need help to, in order to continue educating our students. They need help, and they want our students to have that help. And our staff needs that help, honestly. I've had a lot of conversations with the staff that are struggling because of the the issues with COVID and the issues that their students are dealing with. So I will support the original motion. At this time, I will choose not to support, unfortunately, the substitute motion.
Yes, Member Holloman.
I think this would be a wonderful discussion in normal times and what the kind of thing that the board really should struggle with. Because they're both deep needs. They both help move our mission forward. I'm struck by how little we know about what school's going to look like in a few months and certainly in the fall. And the, to some degree, I'm going to say it's a lack of will for a board to choose to not designate all of its money. But I just think there's so much uncertainty about finishing out the year and about going into fall of 2023 that the board ought to leave latitude where we can. And we are inadequately staffed for, with teachers. We would love to put more in middle school. We'd love to put more in the early grades. We'd love to put more in senior high school. And it's, it's a burning need and that there are good things we can do for our kids that we don't do because we run out of money. The mental health part, I think Member Jacobs makes really valid points. We're a state with one of the highest needs and we put the least into it. That's a really ugly combination. But it is where we are. But I'm not going to support either just for the purpose of leaving that money in the budget so that as we identify critical areas in the spring and going into the fall, there's something there that can be utilized as everything becomes more clear. And if it turns out nothing bad happens over the next four, five months, you wouldn't remember the last four or five months where nothing bad happened? I'm just trying to think back real quick. I can't think of it. But I, I'm, much as I would love to spend it, I'm going to say we should refrain. With the administration knowing that we have that desire, that we are ready to support mental health resources in the targeted area where we need to. And we are ready to put that money into smaller class sizes at our most critical area, which we pretty much revolve around saying that is third and fourth grade reading. So if it turns out that everything else works well and we can do that, I think the superintendent and whoever will be picked to replace her will know that and be ready to do it. But I also think that right now, we should just let that money sit for a little bit.
Thank you. Any other comments, question? Member Donley?
I guess I'll just explain my vote, too. I agree with Member Holloman. I really see both these needs. At the same time, we're looking at the FY23-24 projected budget gap of $40 million. And to have some money, additional funds in the bank to help be a shock absorber to close that gap, I'm looking for something like that. So while I, I think, I'd love to spend this money on both these things. But I think I've got to look out to FY23-24 and the uncertainty we're facing there.
Member Higgins, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I am going to support this motion, and I wanted to explain why. It wasn't that long ago, I remember, when the superintendent talked about efforts to try to lower classroom sizes was something she wasn't successful with. It was a little bit frustrating, and I appreciate that. It's something I support. I remember listening to a second-grade teacher, just so emotional. You know, get students that don't know the ABCs because they missed a year and a half and they're in crisis. And that's one of these schools that's below benchmark substantially. We have got students that are in desperate need for being addressed. There's a learning stage, and they need additional assistance to be able to do that. And there's been studies out there, I've seen in the country earlier, that the success, the impact of the early grades are so critical. In fact, they talk about lowering classroom sizes in the early grades gets you 90% of the benefits of lowering classroom sizes in all the grades. And I think it's, we're in that critical stage. I mean, the whole intent here is to help kids be successful academically as well. Of course, we want to support them emotionally as well. I don't know how the money would be spent otherwise in behavioral health. I know it's important. But I do know the impact of lower classroom sizes in these early grades. They're not reading, they're not on scale, they're behind. If we don't do something to end the seed, we're going to be paying for it every year after that. And so I like the effort here. I appreciate why this is being proposed. Remember, our bottom line is to help kids be successful. And you're not going to do that if you don't have these kids reading, you don't have them in math. And then we're playing catch-up for years after that. If we can catch it early, we're better off. And it allows us to really put resources in a way that's going to make a big difference. I'll just mention before, that I think I'd have in the past, it was studied by Congress, looked at Head Start, and said, these kids start off way ahead in kindergarten. By fourth grade, they're on the same level because you're holding them back. You don't have enough to keep them engaged while you're trying to help the kids further behind. So lower classroom sizes in this area, we know impacts outcomes. And we have some schools that are unbelievably unsuccessful right now with the results that we've seen. I like the way you worded it, you know, in regards to this, really focusing in all those schools. We're all about students and outcomes. If I thought the mental health was someplace that we knew we could spend it well, and it was critical, and it would actually be out there with a program, we had something thought out, I'd have a hard time with this one. But there was no question to me, this outcome is so important. So I appreciate the motion, and it will have my full support.
Any other comments from the board? So I will, you know, there, sometimes we, and this is the first of a struggle. It's going to be a productive struggle. But counselors tell me over and over again, our kids need supports. They are not learning if they are, when they have those, when they are dealing with the mental, with the mental, mental health issues, wellness issues. It's $5 million. How many, how many positions would that give us? Did you say 10? Or it depends on who we hire?
It would depend on the type of positions, if they were.
So we're not putting this $5 million or $4 million wouldn't put. I mean, how many teachers are we really talking about?
Since Andy did the calculations, I'll defer to him.
I'm sorry. Did he say 43? I wrote it down.
Point of clarification, the way that I worded this, it's fewer schools because it's just looking at the ones that are below benchmark. So it will be more than one and a half.
Thank you, Madam President. It would be, it would still be 43 FTE. It's just the way it's worded. I think we would determine which school, some of it, it would be more than one and a half in some, in many of the schools, if we're doing the lowest performing, I think. But 43 FTE would be what would be added back approximately.
We would be hiring, or we would be hiring, our goal would then be to hire 43 teachers between now and what's the date of the?
It would be through the fall school year next year.
For the fall school year next year. And then those positions, and then those people will go away or we look to attrition for, we don't know what we'll do.
Frankly, we lose about 150 teachers a year just through normal attrition. 43 is not something where you would assume it would be followed by a riff.
Okay, so I'll call for the vote. We are voting on the substitute amendment, which would reallocate the funds to grades K through 3 at schools that remain below or far below benchmark reading in math or or math as of spring 2022. Student vote?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Lessens?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
No.
Member Holloman?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
President Bellamy?
No.
So that motion fails. Two yays, five nays. That brings us back to. Is it Amendment 3? That brings us back to Amendment 3. We'll have it loaded in just a minute.
Madam President, in a wrap-up, could I make one last comment?
Sure.
Thank you very much. I just want to address some of the comments that were made, which I think are appropriate, that kind of crowd for a link to be established between mental health supports and academic outputs. And there absolutely is a link. We know that each of our 40,000-plus students don't come to school every day ready to learn. We know that mental health is a key driver in that. Mental health supports reduce behavior problems, improve school climate, and increase academic achievements. It's documented and proven. This is a way to address the challenge that we see in our data every goal monitoring session across the district. And so it's, I think, a focus we should have, and it's in line with the guardrails that we heard from our community. They see value in it. So I would continue to ask the board support in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment number 3? To amend the fiscal year budget by allocating the estimated $5 million in remaining SR2 grant funds for the purpose of health supports and related programming. Seeing no hands, questions, comments? We can vote? Our student vote?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
No.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment passes. Five yeas, two nays. Okay. Does anyone else have any other amendments? Any other amendments? Seeing none, let us vote.
Point of clarifications with Mr. Anderson, will that change the upper limit spending authority?
It's grant.
Oh, okay.
It won't.
Okay, thank you.
Member Higgins, do you have your hand up? Yeah, okay. There it is. Okay.
Where are we at? We're asking for additional amendments at this point?
Yes, we asked for amendments. There weren't any. Did you have one?
Yeah, I did. That's why I was raising my hand. I'm sorry.
Okay, you may state your amendment. Did you send it in early, or do you have it?
No, I didn't send it in earlier. I didn't know if somebody else was going to do an amendment with this, so I was going to follow through with that.
Okay.
I would like to move that we remove the $2.3 million for SROs and place that money in unrestricted general, unrestricted reserves, budget reserves.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, your motion fails. So that brings us back to our vote. Whenever you're ready, Kay. Yes.
Student vote?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Okay. That, so we, our budget passed, six to one.
Madam President, might I have a moment of personal privilege?
Yes.
Thank you. I move to direct ASD administration to develop and facilitate the presentation of a clear and actionable proposal, which reallocates the approximately $3 million in funds cost shifted to ASD from the FY 22 Anchorage municipal budget. This proposal should present for a clear vision for how the Anchorage School District will utilize this funding should the Anchorage Assembly choose to reverse these cost shifts during their first quarter budget revision process with a clear focus of proposed reallocation to board guardrails related to supporting employee performance, development of a diverse and culturally responsive workforce, and addressing underrepresentation in lottery and application-based programs. The proposal shall be provided to the Anchorage Assembly a minimum of seven days prior to the meeting date, which first quarter budget revisions will be addressed. Second.
And when is the meeting date? Do you know?
I don't. At this time, I want to give flexibility, was the intent with the motion.
So is this, so this is a, you're making a formal motion? Okay, so we do not have, and I'm trying to figure out where to put this on the agenda. I mean, it's not on the agenda. It's a point of personal privilege, not... So are you, to me, you are asking for discussion and maybe a straw poll from the board?
I'm asking for a deviation from our normal course of business to provide direction outside of the adopted budget at this point and see it as tangentially related to what we just passed, and so I felt it was appropriate to discuss now. Thank you.
Okay, so your purpose is to discuss it. So is there, so do we need a second? I think we do need a second. Oh, Andy did. Okay. So you may speak to your motion.
Thank you. And I want to first acknowledge that Mayor Bronson and his staff have made time to sit through our lengthy, although not quite as lengthy as municipal budget process, sit here with us tonight. I want to reciprocate and indicate that I value the partnership between the municipality, the mayoral administration, and the assembly and our areas of our finances. I think as part of that relationship, we need to continue to advocate, as we do in Juno, each and every legislative session, for the resources we need. I think we just had a lengthy discussion as to why the district doesn't have adequate financial resources it needs right now. And so I think that as part of the motion that's now on the floor, having specific asks from the administration in the areas of our goals and guardrails to take with us and meet with our local partners, that will be important as they engage in the first quarter budget revision process. So I would ask the board's support in directing the administration to take this action and help us with our advocacy efforts. Thank you.
And so you would have, it's just a point of general privilege as it relates to the budget that we just hit. We just looked it up.
Sure, the, I don't see the two as directly relating, although this motion indirectly relates to what we just passed.
Yes, okay. Yes. Member Holloman?
I'd like to speak in favor of it also. Certainly, it needs to be done in a timely way. We've had the discussion about SRO funding before, about 10 years ago, maybe a little less. Our budget comes to us to instruct students. At the same time, we recognize a rather critical value that SROs provide to students as well as the well-being of the town. And when past administrations have chosen to cut back funding from the municipality or from the police department, ASD stepped in with funding as a way to maintain it. But the feeling is that the police budget should reflect police work, and the ASD budget should reflect instruction or running the school district. And that's, that's the direction I hope that the municipality takes and that we take. I think if the administration prepares what Member Jacobs is talking about, it will give the municipality and the assembly a picture of the impact they would be having in not fully funding the SRO program out of the police budget. You know, we don't dispatch them, we don't supervise them, we don't set their duties. But we do work cooperatively in a way that I think promotes the well-being of the town and certainly of the students that are impacted in a really positive way. So I would not want to see the program fail. If it needed a lifeline to keep going at full strength, I'd want us to do that. But I don't think we should have to. So I do support Member Jacobs' motion.
Okay, any other comments? I'd like to hear from the administration if there are no more board comments. Oh, Dora, I'm sorry. Hold on, Dr. Did I see your hand? No? Okay, go on, Dora.
I also support both the work of the SROs. I've seen the great work that they've done. I've worked with, as Member Jacobs, I'm also a licensed therapeutic foster parent, and I've worked with the SROs who have been trained and are really good at working with students and de-escalating them. I've worked with police officers that have not had that training and are not nearly as good as de-escalating the situation with students. And so I do support the work that they do. I appreciate the work that they do in the schools. I do want to clarify, because I feel that there was some testimony tonight where it was missed, what I felt was miscommunicated, that the SRO that Anchorage School District in last year's budget paid for the SRO funding. It came out of ASD's funding last year. And I want to clarify and please the administration, if you choose to clarify, that the SRO program was paid out of the municipality budget last year, not out of Anchorage School District budget. So I wanted that clarification out there. Thank you.
Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. In the past, the SROs have been paid for by the municipality, by the district, and then also jointly. But this fiscal year, it is out of the MOA. And we haven't paid actually since FY 14 is the memo I received. I just want to share a correction, that I don't believe that we receive either state funds or city funds strictly only to instruct students. We provide a program that ensures safety and the well-being of not only our students, but our staff, who have been growingly concerned, as you shared, about instances that do cause harm for mental health. You mentioned the ACES, that that's inclusive of crimes, that's inclusive of maltreatment, that's inclusive of fights, danger. What happens in our community, the schools are a microcosm of that. And for me, operationally, to provide our community a safe operation, for our students and staff and parents to believe that we are doing our very best, the SROs are absolutely, absolutely a part of that. And about who pays for it, we receive funds from the state and we receive from the city. We could say that we use state funds to pay for them instead of the city funds. I don't, I mean, however you want to split the pie. But we've just been talking about $5 million for this, $3 million for this. I would, I mean, I say it tongue-in-cheek, but I think you're going to have to put more administrators in the district to continue to keep planning for the work that we want to do to spend money. It is highly concerning to me, highly concerning, that the movement or even the thought of causing any kind of anxiety just because of who wants to pay for it, it's causing too much anxiety. So I mean, I know you didn't ask, that wasn't the answer you asked for, but the money is green, it pays for a program, and the program is valued. Not only, we heard from the Student Advisory Board, we heard from the Teachers Union, we heard from the Principals Union, and administration. I don't know of one other thing that is aligned in this district as much as the support for the safety of young people and employees alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Member Donley?
So I've been going over in my head the Robert's Rules on this, but I'm not going to raise any objections, because the board can do what it wants to do as far as taking things up, I think. Because it's related enough to the budget, you know, that I'm not going to... But I am concerned about it, and I hope that everybody gets the same leeway in the future on things like this. So my priority for such funds would be to increase the fund balance to be available to reduce the $40 million budget gap projected for fiscal year 23-24, rather than utilizing them for the three things that are enumerated in this particular proposal. We're looking at a $40 million gap in just two years. And we don't have any plan to fill it, other than go get more money from Juno. I mean, that's the only thing I've heard. I mean, where is that $40 million going to come from? I mean, if, if we were to be allocated more funds in the city budget, I think we should, we should, you know, save on to them and start to chip away at that $40 million projected gap. Even, you know, and my personal experience from this kind of stuff is that, you know, you start getting a million here, a million there, and you just start working it down. And we've only got two years to get there, and we need to start on it. So if those funds were available, I don't support using them for the things enumerated at this time. I support put them in the fund balance to help, help deal with the projected $40 million gap. We're looking at it for FY 23-24.
Any other comments? Thank you, Member Donley. Yes, Member Lessons?
A very short one. I just wanted to point out that the increase this year is a 5,111% increase for this cost.
For what cost?
For, excuse me, for the, for that, for what, the transfer to the municipality on behalf of the SRO program.
Okay. Member Donley?
You know, this, this particular motion doesn't say SRO anywhere in it, but I want to be clear on the record, I support funding the SROs any way possible, because we just can't afford not to have them in our schools. So I support the budget the way it is, where it's funded through state and local, state and local taxes. But I can't imagine a world without the SROs there, given what has happened nationally in schools and the threat to our students and the wonderful record of success they have. It's just phenomenal. And the support from our principals for it. So I support it in the budget the way it is. I just support the program.
Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to be clear in that I didn't allocate any specific item or program by design and that I think there's universal support for the program on this dais. We haven't expressed any differently in this meeting or any prior board meeting. As a matter of fact, I think by a vote of, was it six to one, we just passed a budget that funded the program that was just shifted out of the municipal budget. So I think we just took action to that end. This is purely a matter to recover costs, as we will need the funds in the future. And money that we allocate to these guardrails will free up funds in other areas, as Member Donley indicated, to include PTR in the upcoming fiscal cliff. So I think we are all in agreement. It might not just seem that way. Thank you.
I'd just like to, thank you, Member Jacobs. So, Dr. Bishop, do you have any thoughts on what we're, I mean, because I think, I don't even know what the date is. But I don't, it might not even be seven days. What would the impact be for us to do this?
Thank you, Madam President. And for the record, I brought up SROs because it was brought up in this, on the dais. So I, that's why I spoke to it. And there has been discussions in the past, at work sessions in regard to, you know, not paying for SROs if the city doesn't pay. So that's why I wanted to be clear. Member Jacobs talked to me about that, about just, not necessarily a full-blown plan, but items to provide to the assembly on different needs that the district has. And so we could put together our heads and make a list of needs that the district could spend $3 million on. And that was my understanding of that, simply because of the time limits of, and then expanding that over time with a full-scale strategic plan. But I am not sure. I guess their first quarter, January, February, March, March would be their first quarter.
And so this is the 22nd, we got another week. We've got about 10 days.
Their next regular meeting is March 1st, as is ours.
Is that next week? That is next week. Okay, so is it, it's doable to come up with something? Is that what you're saying, if this passes?
When a list was, a list of items that the district could spend money on, yes, we could come up with a list of items.
Yes. Member Jacobs, is that what you, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, no, Dr. Bishop and I talked prior to the meeting. I have one mind regarding the intent. And then the latest I heard was that the first quarter budget revisions were scheduled to take place in March, but I don't know that to be the case. I don't have the assembly schedule in front of me, so.
All right, Kay. Okay, seeing no more, we have before us a point of general privilege. Who's hand? Oh, Pat, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was going to speak up at one point, but I decided to be quiet and surprise you all. I just want a couple of points here. I mean, we've had over five years, and I just checked with, on this. But, you know, a 5%, 1% per year adjustment to our budget because, from the municipality, because it's related to transportation, we have not had an increase in base student allocation. This issue came up, transferring this from the mayor, because... This issue came up, transferring this from the mayor, because they were not able to get the increase in the budget they would like. They have an adjustment factor for inflation, but because the population's changes and all, he was looking at that and trying to be able to show a savings. We, we have, we have not, we have been on the losing end of adjustments like that, but the municipality hasn't. And they've recognized that in the past and trying to support us. My concern is that this type of change is not a one year. This is an ongoing situation. And the, and the, and the Assembly understands the dilemma that we are in right now, too, I believe. So, I don't mind this. I, I feel like the issue of how our budget is, we know Pyke's algorithm shows how much we're behind, we know the other changes are out there. Yeah, we can do things short-term, because we have federal funds, and then we go off the cliff, and, and regards to it. I support this because it's trying to make a point. I don't know if we're really going to be defined what we could or could not do, because you could always use budget, budget surplus for three million, or do something else if it's a crisis. But it is, is just an ongoing situation that has been created unnecessarily, unfortunately. I do agree, I appreciate the fact the mayor coming to express their concerns and the support for it. I think everybody supports the, the SRO, that is not an issue, and we will do whatever we have to, to continue that. And I wouldn't think otherwise. But I do think this is really municipal employees doing what effectively the best way they can for law enforcement, and the relationship between students and law enforcement has improved so much, so that I support this. But I, it's not just a matter of what dollars we can spend a day, the problem is ongoing. So, thank you.
Yes, Member Donnelly.
You know, you know, the board can find a way to do this, I'm sure, procedurally, but can we not call it a point of personal privilege? Because it just isn't.
It's, it's, it's not a point of general, I looked it up, it said we could do a point of general privilege. So, what do you recommend?
Well, it's a substantive matter. It's not a point of any kind of privilege. It's, it's just not that under Robert's Rules. Now, there's things you can do. You can do a sense of the body, you could do, we could have done.
When I did a sense of the body, the last time, I, I got some feedback that that was not a process.
Well, it, it is a process, parliamentary, parliamentary process.
Well, I did it, and I'll do it, I can do it again.
I mean, I'm just saying, there's, it's, I'm not trying to cause a problem, I just don't want to create a precedent that this is a point of personal privilege, you know?
Point of general privilege. So, point of general is motion pertaining to rights of the entire body. Yeah, it's not relative to one person. This issue, he brought an issue up for the body to, to determine. So, what do you recommend, Member Donnelly?
Well, in the legislature, we do, we, we ask for a sense of the body. That's what we would do. Of course, we use Mason's Manual, and, and it's designed to facilitate that. It takes a lot of support to do that, because typically, things are ruled, sent on a committee. But, but you can do it if you want, if you've got enough votes, you know? That's why, you know, I don't see a particular problem with getting there. It's just that I don't really think it fits under either of those procedural motions.
Okay, I'm going to pivot over to Member Holloman, the other Robert Rule supporterist.
Um, yeah, the, the general motions of privilege relate to what the body is, has the ability to do, and they're not debatable.
Right.
Um, this is, in essence, part of the budget discussion. So, if it had come as an amendment to the budget, that would have been in order. But in essence, it's a, a motion that's simply made, and we're acting on it, and that's not our usual procedure. We normally have to go to a committee and come back with a recommendation. I, I think a sense to the body makes sense. We're, we're asking the superintendent to do something for us, and she tends to do that.
Yeah, I know. We probably could have just asked her to do it. Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Bishop?
That was going to be my suggestion.
Just ask you to do it.
Just ask your list.
After all this. So, it seems like there is, is there anybody that is not, yeah, I, I'm not seeing, remember, it's your motion at this point? Are you comfortable, given the discussion so far, and the fact that the superintendent just said we just need to ask her to do it? Are you okay with withdrawing?
Yeah, if we've just conducted a straw poll, sense of the body, and the administration's in agreement, I have no problem withdrawing the motion. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, the board.
Thank you. Did you get that, Katie? All right. Thank you. All right, let's get back to our agenda. We are now on our, thank you, guys. We, this was a great discussion. I appreciate all of your input. Item G, that's non-action items, they will be back before you next week. And we will have a full discussion on each of those next week. We are now at public comment. Is there anyone left in the audience who would like to comment, make a comment at So, it looks like we have Eve Green on the line. Eve, did you, oops, did she go? Yeah. Eve?
Yeah.
Can you hear, yes. This is, this is our public, our last public comment, so you are, you're on, if you would like to talk, speak to the board.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
I'm, okay. I'm here today to support dropping the overwhelming tyrannical mask mandates that have been imposed upon our children for the past two years in Anchorage. For some reason, the school board seems to think that they're doing what is right for the children and for the people. The people and the parents are telling you otherwise, but you're not listening. First of all, don't sit here, lie to our faces while we pay your salaries and tell us that this isn't political or about reelection. How many of you today are yourselves endorsed by Planned Parenthood? For some, it doesn't get more political than that. If this isn't political, then why aren't you following the actual science of the virus? A virus that let me remind you, in the United States of America, ends in the death for less than 1.00013% of the population between the ages of zero and 17. That's less deaths in two years than suicide and car accidents, cancer, homicide, abuse and neglect, on and on. This also isn't about our children's health. If it were about the children's health, then why haven't we changed how school lunches are scheduled and what is actually given to our children? I've always volunteered at my child's schools, and I know firsthand what they're being given. If this were about their health, then why aren't the rates for bullying and child abuse and suicide dropping? Why aren't the rates of drug overdose going down? No, this isn't about the health of our children. This is about, and many have said it, political theater, so that you can look good in the eyes of people who you think will reelect you, but you don't look good. It looks tyrannical. And when history is recalled, people will remember that you didn't stand up and fight against this tyranny. You didn't stand up and get, and fight for our children, the people in our community who need it the most. It's our next generation, they're our jewels. It's not right for my daughter, who's in seventh grade, to fear taking her mask down or letting it fall beneath her nose, and then fear all day getting detention, suspension, expulsion, ridicule, and even salty attitudes from some educators in the school. This is, this is not the only instance of this happening. This is their fight now, and it's a fight that has been thrust upon them without choice. The Fourteenth Amendment states that even approved medical treatments may not be imposed without informed consent, or it is considered battery as such. Anyone requiring participation in a medical experiment considered coercion can be held liable, personally liable for damages incurred. The Nuremberg Code, which is codified into American law, provides us the protection from accepting any forced medical procedure, therapy, or device. There can be no element of coercion, deceit, or duress. These actions are unlawful and are considered.
Thank you very much, Eve. Okay, that is our last, um, where is the word, my agenda? So, that brings us now to item I. Superintendent, update? We'll keep an eye on our time.
I'm going to go very quickly, Madam President. I want to congratulate our ASD teams who participated in the Battle of the Books. They were able to participate because of their teachers and the librarians who actually put the competition on, and I will read off the schools that scored. So, in third, fourth grade, there were 32 teams statewide. Huffman and Birchwood, ABC, both tied for second. I'm going to jump to high school and say, high school, our Bartlett team took fifth in the state out of 18 teams. Middle school, there were 23 teams, and our highest ASD team was Greening, took eighth place. And now, Aquarian at the fifth and sixth grade took sixth place. But ladies and gentlemen, the state winning, fifth, sixth grade team who competed and beat 32 other teams for first place was Rogers Park, fifth and sixth grade. Congratulations! And that's all the good news I have to share.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Yes, doctor, uh, doctor, I'm, I'm, I'm just renaming everybody tonight.
I have a jurisdrifter.
Mr. Donnelly, I got the da-da right.
Um, Madam Superintendent, you mentioned you might give us an update on the gentleman that was here, and he was concerned about what happened at, at the school, at the event in the gymnasium. It was, I thought it was pretty ironic that, I thought you, that same evening, you set out a very rational, reasonable way to deal with those kind of issues, and yet, that's not what happened to him, according to his version of the account.
Sure, I can update you in B.C. We don't generally talk about it in public, but there was a difference in opinions about what occurred. So, in regard to the masking, you know, that was kind of a discussion, but what occurred after that was the point of discussion that Dr. Stock is going to reevaluate, and I will stick it in there. But yes, we, at this point, we have said, just provide a mask, ask nicely, but we're not going to engage and be masked police. That is what I said on the eighth, and his account is different. When secondary looked into it, they shared another scenario as well, and so, Dr. Stock will do a final evaluation and reevaluate it.
Thank you. We can put that in Board Connect. Other comments from board members? Dora?
I, I wanted to say a couple specific thank yous. There are, at our community council meetings this month, we presented on the bonds, and I had both the toms, I'm, it's so much easier to say both of the toms, that attended each of those with me. And, and there was community members that had some specific questions that they were just able to answer right off the bat, so I, I just appreciate that time. I know that was quite a few evenings that you spent supporting board members, so thank you.
Yeah, I did all that. I had, I didn't have both toms, I had one tom. You guys have been great doing that. That, that takes out of your evening. I appreciate it. Because my, at least at my community council meetings, people really, they don't have a lot of questions, but they do have questions. All right. Member Lessons?
I have two questions. One is technical, and one is maybe just allowing for a little bit of thoughtfulness. You have, we have a new, you unleashed, unveiled, rolled out, announced, is the word I'm looking for. You announced a change to the masking policy. And the technical question I have is, are school buses subject to TSA rules requiring that masking is still going to be a part of school buses?
That's a great question. To the President, member Lessons, yes. And in the summer, we worked through this as well, when we transported this summer. That was the case as well. We had masks, they didn't bring one to put on.
So, families, I mean, this is sort of an announcement to families, but families would need to continue, their students would need to continue masking on buses as long as the TSA requires that buses and other.
That's correct. Okay. The TSA changed on air flights as of March 18th. We don't know if that's going to be another transportation. But yes, schools are going to communicate, be prepared, and we've worked through that in the past.
Okay. And then, the second question is, could you illuminate your thinking on February 28th as the turning point? Why, why that date versus, versus tomorrow, versus the day after spring break? I mean, what, what helped you make that decision?
Sure. I left it till after a board meeting, because last time I changed it by surprising you, you said that wasn't good. And so, I allowed time for you to discuss it with me and the public. And so, the 28th was the, the next, just a date that I had chosen far enough out there for families to make decisions, if there were large-scale decisions, as may have been shared. Some are going to enroll students, and some might choose to unenroll students.
Member Jacobs?
Thank you. So, two quick questions. The, the first is that, at the previous meeting, we had checked in about the availability of N95 masks, and my understanding is that the administration ordered some to replenish some kits, as we donated them to the municipality in the past. I was also told that staff could, on a case-by-case basis, request an N95 from either their school leadership or school nursing staff. Is that still the case?
That is presently still the case, yes.
Okay. Then a separate question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. At a work session, we had about six weeks ago now, I believe, we had the chance to talk with the state Epi team, and they indicated that they concurred with the CDC recommendation at that time of universal masking in schools. In our conversations with them, how has their guidance changed since?
To the President, to Member Jacobs, that's a, a good question, and I shared with the board a letter that Dr. Zink sent in conjunction with Michael Johnson, sharing that communities will have to determine on their own how to scale down as we move out of the high case counts of Omicron, that it would be appropriate. But it was very open to lots of different things. We have already scaled down back in September, October, close contacts. Some of the testimony today was really about isolation. If you have a positive case, you isolate, you don't quarantine. We have not been asked anyone to quarantine in quite some time. That was for those that were in association with a positive. Our policy has been, if you're healthy, you come to school, whether you're an adult or a child, if you have symptoms. We have the very best, fastest testing you could want, PCR, to be sure if you're sick or not. So, some of those scaling down, we had already done in the past. We scaled down quarantine or isolation being out for a positive case from 10 days to five in accordance. So, the idea of scaling back was appropriate. One of the things that, that team cautioned against was removing everything all at once. And so, for us, one of the next steps was masking. I did have a, a conversation with Dr. Zink herself in regard to elementary schools, and the idea of, again, the impact on educational learning. And I know a lot of feedback is that I'm not a real doctor, because I'm a, you know, an EDD, not a medical person, and I, I didn't share anything about the medical use of a mask, but I am highly qualified to let this board know that educationally and the well-being of students is being affected, and we should listen to our educators in the classrooms who are sharing that with me every day. So, I suggested to her that we need to do this in elementary, we, we have to help these kids. And she talked about cohorting, and that would be an appropriate scale down. And, you know, she sees why we would do that, and, you know, they're, it's elementary school, they're in a classroom, that they're with those kids anyway. And when we brought it back to our team, it was very clear feedback that came from schools that it would be difficult to do just partial families, that if we were at a time that we want to take masks off, wait until we can do it for a large majority. And so, while my conversations happened in January, and we waited and we waited, I didn't send out an update February 1st, because I wanted to wait just a little bit longer to get those cases down, because they're trending, they're, you know, we're going to have high cases for a very long time, because. They're, you know, we're gonna have high cases for a very long time because Omicron is, it's gonna settle at a higher rate, I believe, than others, simply because it is more transmissible. So, the point of your question is, yes, that scaled down, yes, I received support in that. But again, they just give guidance, not decision-making and recommendations. But as you read, the, the letter did share, it is appropriate for communities to consider scaling back. In schools, we're going to have to do that anyway over time. So, I hope that answers your question. It's a long, about way to let the board know that quite a bit of thought did go into this and waiting and talking to stakeholders to come up with the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Looking at our time, it is now 10:53. We need to, if we're gonna be going longer than 11, we need to go on.
I was gonna say, Madam President, move to extend till 11:30.
Second.
Okay, moved to extend. Any opposition to extending? Can we let, I, I would like to let the staff go if, if we can. I, I just think, because we're just left for board comments. So, if, Dr. Bishop, if the staff wishes to leave, they may.
I was thinking if I was gonna get another question, I might need a lifeline, but that's okay.
You need to call a friend.
Yeah, I have my phone. They can tell me certainly. I appreciate it. I'm sure they do and their families do. So, thank you for your support this evening.
Thank you, guys. Okay. All right, so.
Madam President, I did just get, we are 31 active cases in the district now, down from 1,400 when the state team briefed the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, board member comments. We've already had member, we've had two board member comments. Go on, Member Holloman.
I'm gonna say, I know a lot of people expected us to vote on whether or not we supported that decision, not understanding that it was still within the superintendent's authority to make the changes. It would have taken a motion. And that would have put us all on the record. I did come prepared to support it. There's still a lot of concern and I think we have to be prepared for the idea that we might see a blip, an uptick, just in that if we had an aggressive masking policy, even without COVID, you could expect to see an uptick in some illnesses in the district if you stop masking. Because contrary to what some people have said, there's lots of evidence that masks make a difference for airborne dispersed agents of disease. I also did want to say to the public, we've had a lot of feedback on both sides of this issue. It's not a matter of not listening to one side or the other. It sebbed and flowed from one side to the other, but, but there are a lot of people in the community with concerns that want to see it continue. There are a lot of people that want to see it come to an end or be a choice and we understand that. The political side of it, I've never really understood. It has always been about the public health issue. And I think one of the confusing things in this policy is that it's not necessarily about guaranteeing the safety of, of a particular individual. The mask and the mitigation steps can't do that. But hopefully, during the most difficult times of this, we help keep the case rate down in the city of Anchorage. And right now, we, we still have a high rate. It's dropping dramatically. It does feel to me like we're somewhere close to the right moment to take this step. I can't really say exactly where it is, but I think we're close enough. Again, it'll fall to our staff and everybody in the buildings to take the brunt of it and, and face the change and, and see how it goes. I do have confidence that if something goes awry, the superintendent's ready to take a step to mitigate that. And, and I think where we're headed is into an area where it can be more focused. It won't be a district-wide policy or a district-wide decision. It'll be in a building or a classroom or, or something in particular as the incidence of all this narrows down to much smaller numbers and, and more localized situations. So, I, I would hope that people in the public realize, all of us have thought about this a lot. It's not something anybody ever wanted to do. We always wanted to be focused on other things and I think we've made the best choices we could. Anchorage has had a relatively good experience compared to so many other areas. I'd like to think that, that the steps that were taken here had something to do with it. Wasn't possible to avoid it entirely and, but, but we've done pretty well overall. So, I do appreciate everyone voicing their opinion. I, I would hope that they understand how seriously the board members and the administration and everybody in all the buildings have taken this through the whole time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. I did that on purpose.
I said that a lot of times.
Thank you, thank you, Member Holloman. Okay, Member Donnelly, you already had your, your comments.
No, no, I had a question. I asked this because I didn't make a comment.
No, we're on comments, we're on board member comments.
Yeah, we're on board member comments now. No, I asked a question.
Yeah. And Kelly had a question. No, we're, we're.
So, my, my comment.
That's why I said they could kind of go.
Well, that's fine.
Go on.
My comment was this meeting, at last meeting, we were meeting after Dr. King's birthday celebration. And this, this meeting, we're, we're meeting after what, when I grew up was George Washington's birthday and became president's day. And I just wanted to reflect back upon Washington's greatness. At his Thanksgiving proclamation where he declared Thanksgiving, he said, "It's the duty of all nations to acknowledge the province of Almighty God, to obey His will and to be grateful for His benefits and humbly to employ His protection and favor." And then on being an American, President Washington stated, "Citizens by birth or choice of a common country, that country has a right to concentrate your affections. The name of American which belongs to you in your national capacity must always exalt the just pride of patriotism more than any appellation derived from local discriminations." And then his very, very amazing farewell address, we all remember what King George said about George Washington, said, "If he can, if he can walk away from leader, being a leader of a country like that, he will be the greatest man that ever lived," basically he said. And in his farewell address to Americans, he said, particularly concerning to me, given what's been happening in Canada lately, he said, "If the freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent, we will, we may be led like sheep to the slaughter." Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Any other board member comments? Not seen any? Oh, Pat.
I will make it short.
I think I saw you wave, yes.
Yeah, I'll make it short though. I, I always like to thank the people who did come and addressed the board and, and listening to what they had to say. There was pretty heartfelt feelings, both sides in regards to the mask issue. And there has to be a time where, where things are going to come to an end, but there's also something looking out ahead. Omicron 2 is supposed to be 50% more contagious than the current or, but it's mild, we just don't know what's gonna be coming and how that will impact things. So, I hope that the district keeps an eye open in regards to how we could do it differently, maybe less easier if we have to deal again with some type of major breakout because they don't know what's gonna be coming in line with it. But I appreciate both comments and I wish there was some way to get both sides to be able to say, okay, tell me what the other side said. Because what I heard on both sides was, I don't want to be afraid, I want to be the mask, I want to be protected. And the other side saying, you know, that this is, there are consequences to wearing masks, you know, whether you wear them or not, and they're both right. So, we'll move forward with that and go forward. So, I appreciate that. And with that, kid, how much time do we have left? Do I get to keep talking?
Thank you very much. So, I think we have a finance committee meeting tomorrow at noon and 13 hours. Okay, other than that, our next meeting will be next Tuesday. Yes. Comment, only comments.
Yeah, quick comment, quick comment. I think it's really important for the board and the community to think about how we're gonna collectively move forward. I think that we need to consider how we conceptualize and proactively prepare healthy school environments. We need to consider structural changes to improve student well-being, including renewed attention to student start times and the structure of the school day, including attention to recess and lunch. We need to consider all of the different ways that we, we must support our whole students if we're gonna see them succeed.
Thank you. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right.